Let's go ahead and get started. We got a lot of stuff to do and want to try to get it finished tonight. Again, my sincere gratitude to you all for the countless, countless hours that you all put in to doing this. It's very, very much appreciated. And same to council, because we've been involved with it as well. So, take it away. Let's do it.
Folks, the TV in the back, unfortunately, we just tried to turn it on. It's not working. So hopefully you can see what we have here.
Good evening. Thank you for having Frank and Eric here this evening for a joint meeting of the zoning commission and the city council. We will start this evening by quickly reviewing the zoning ordinance subdivision ordinance update process. Then we will dive into the discussion, which is the discussion of specific topics in the draft UDO, including the central business district for downtown center and midway, proposed professional office district that was discussed back in June, and murals. And then we will examine his next steps based on tonight's discussions. As most of you know, I'm giving these presentations and the discussion. Please interrupt to ask questions or to add to the conversation at any time. The zoning and subdivision ordinance update process is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase included an analysis of the existing conditions in the city, as well as a thorough examination of the existing zoning subdivision ordinances. At the end of that phase, we produced a diagnostic report, which is available on the city's website. Phase two included creating revised regulations. The major changes from your current code were fleshed out, and we concluded phase two in September of 23. All of the phase two drafts were compiled into one document, and that is also available on the city's website. Phase three began in January of this year, and on January 11th of 2024, we provided a draft of all proposed amendments. The phase three draft revised zoning and subdivision ordinance is available on the city's website as well. And phase three ended in April. We are currently in phase four. On May 6th, we delivered the first edition of the phase four draft. And the phase four includes the adoption process for revised zoning and subdivision ordinance, as well as the map. We will deliver a second edition of the phase four draft that incorporates all of the requested changes that we've been talking about this part and June is part of phase four. There will be no coffee and conversations tomorrow, August 1st. Most of our discussions this evening will be focused on Article 3, which is the article in the UDO that includes all of the zoning districts. We will just start with the discussion with the discussion of the central business dinner district for downtown center or downtown and midway. For the ease of discussion, I have split the discussion of central business district, and we will start with town center. The questions to consider this evening in town center include the density and intensity of development in the town center core and the supporting subzoning districts. We discussed last month the urbanated height in the town center core and supporting subzoning districts, but we did not conclude our discussions on the maximum building width. Based on the discussions at the council retreat, we will also discuss the expansion of the town center core subzoning district to accomplish more of the parcel behind West Banko, as well as permitting the bed and breakfast establishments in the town center supporting subzoning district. And then finally, we will revisit permitting single-family detached dwellings by right in the town center supporting subzoning district. Let's review quickly the subzoning districts in the town center. In town center, there are three subzoning districts that differentiate uses and development standards: the core, supporting, and the residential. The pink is the town center core. The light orange is the supporting subzoning district. And the dusty blue is the residential subzoning district, which includes all of the homes on Miller, Lumley, and Autobahn Place. And then you will notice the red line for a portion of the town center. That means that there is a required occupied space in those locations. And then you will also see the asterisk switched to note a terminating line. Finally, you will see the brown hash marks, and those hash marks show the limits of the central business district historic overlay district. All right. So while we made decisions in June about limiting the maximum building height to 40 feet in both the town center core and the town center supporting subzonia district, we also at that point in time said that we would limit the number of stories to two for flat roof buildings and slope roof buildings to two and a half stories. As we were concluding that...
He turned it on. I was like, what's coming?
Even though we made those decisions about height and stories, there still seem to be some concern about the overall intensity and density of development in town center. And so we started to discuss in June some regulatory options in order to provide acceptable density and intensity in town center. And I will review those options in a few slides. However, first, as you requested in June, I will show how development could occur on the Fifth Third Bank site under the draft standards for the town center core, supporting subzoning districts, using some very rough calculations. So this is the Fifth Third Bank site. The brown line that you see on the slide is the zoning district boundary line, and the dotted blue lines show the required setbacks. There's a minimum front setback in the subzoning district of 25 feet, seven feet for each side, and then a 25-foot rear setback. And in this case, the setback is going to be measured from the zoning district boundary line, not the property line. As I said, based on very rough calculations, that assume that stormwater is handled underground and parking is provided below grade, there are two buildings that would be permitted on this site that are approximately 70 feet in width with 15 feet between them. Assuming two-story buildings, one building could have a gross floor area of approximately 14,500 square feet, and the other might be approximately 18,000 square feet. Again, these are very rough calculations. But based on the discussions that we had last month, you seem like you wanted to understand what those numbers meant. And so this is a way to show that to you. Before we move into our questions, are there any questions about this slide?
What is the total square feet of the lot?
So the lot itself goes all the way back to Woodland. It is about a little over two acres. In this particular case, the zoning district boundary line is what you see there. So it's greatly reduced.
Let me add a question, but based on that. Beyond zoning district boundary line, two acres is a large chunk. What regulates any of that, if anything?
So what's behind that zoned R1C?
Just R1C.
It's R1C. What you should probably know, as you're sitting at 114 Thomas and you head back toward Woodland, there's a huge, excuse me, a huge grade difference between there and there. There's a huge ravine from the back as you head back toward that residential area.
So when you refer to a 14,500 or 18,000 square foot structure there, I would assume you're saying that's only the footprint, not necessarily first floor, second floor?
No, that's a total of both.
A total of both.
A total of both, assuming a two-story building. And again, that's gross floor area, not usable floor area. I mean, that's going to be closets and hallways and all of those things.
And is that the concept of, how to say it, first, second, and a half floor?
That is actually just two stories.
Just not considering topography, if you took one of these out and say put an entrance and to go behind it, you could have similar structures behind?
No, because it's zoned R1C. Behind that brown line, it's zoned R1C, which is a residential zoning district.
And as it is today.
As it is today, and under the draft zoning map. And actually, what I should probably point out to you, the dotted lines you see on the screen, that black and white dotted lines, that is where the zoning district boundary is today. Under the draft map, it is being moved up. So less of the lot will actually be zoned town center, central business district town center supporting.
Did you do any calculations to see if the amount of parking you could get would support that on one floor of a basement could support that?
I did not.
Because it doesn't seem to be that significant.
Because the problem is...
It's a big factor in...
Parking is a huge factor, but we don't put uses on one floor. You know, if it's going to be residential, it's going to have to be parking on site. It will have to be provided somewhere. If it's non-residential, the planning commission does today and under the draft UDO, has to be moved into place, some parking. But if it's any sort of residential use, the parking will happen on site.
Well, in single-family homes, if that's a possible option, it's been brought up just in the entire quarter, allowing permitted use of single-family homes versus, you know, multifamily residential or commercial use.
So, right. So this is one of the, as I said in the opening, we discussed back in June, allowing single-family detached dwellings on this site and other part of supporting as a by right use. During that discussion that we had back in June, you seem to be thinking that you didn't want to allow it as a by right use, since you were more amenable to allowing those restricted use for those sites that currently have single-family homes. We will actually be revisiting that topic again later on in the discussion as to whether or not potentially allowing single-family detached by right, meaning you could tear down Fifth Third and put in single-family detached homes would be permitted. And so we'll be discussing that later on in the presentation, if that's okay.
That's fine.
So I have a quick question before we get into probably the next slide. So when, if you look at this where to say they have similar density restrictions that say R3 would have. Do you take, when you take that first 8,000 square feet for the lot, allows you to build four units, and every 4,000 square feet after that allows you to additional unit for 4,000 square feet. So when you're doing that calculation, does it just the footprint of the zone there? Or does it include the footprints of the property that goes into another zone?
No, only the was allowed in that zone itself. So essentially, everything behind that zoning district line that's zoned R1C is not a part of the conversation or a part of the calculation.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
I'm not sure exactly what we're trying to do here, but you brought it up, so I need to understand this. You mentioned that the dashed black and white line, the current zoning district, the current district, and now you're moving it...
Slightly forward.
Forward. What was the reasoning, I guess, behind that? And then was that requested by the owner, or is this a taking? In other words, we're taking their property and, you know, saying now it's going to be residential, and now they have to go through the process of changing it? Or they wanted to put parking on there?
So it was not requested by the property owner. The current zoning map that is in place was essentially digitized at some point in time we passed very poorly. And the line was drawn with no particular meaning in place. And so when we were looking at the map, and we're trying to bring some meaning to it, and we lined it up with the lot next door. So there was some rationale as to why the line was drawn there, but as it was not currently. But the property owner will be notified.
So the way that the current CBD zone is laid out, it extends beyond the rear lot line of all of those properties that front on North Wortham 7. It extends into the rear yards of the houses that are on the east side of Woodland. So basically, that CBD line will then go down that property lot.
Our goal of all of this was actually on the zoning map to get rid of those split zone parcels and all those folks in the Woodlands for the special zoning.
Are the lot, the banks on and the lot behind it all about the same portion?
It's all one lot, and it's all owned by the owner. And so this is one of the few places where we are intentionally split zoning lots.
So does the lot have frontage on Woodland?
No.
So there's no frontage on Woodland. So the only way to develop residential in the back is to go through the front from 114 Thomas.
That is correct.
Which would restrict the ability to build those buildings if you're going to develop residential property.
Or they would have to find somewhere to get through there on Woodland.
Or a forest.
Or a forest.
Is there frontage on forests?
No, there's no...
There's no frontage at all. It's all a combination of interesting flat lots back there.
So to create flat lots, you would have to have an angular entrance off of 114 Thomas.
Well, what we're saying is that because of the flat lots back there, there is no frontage.
Right. That's what I'm saying. To create that, you would have to have an angular entrance off of 114 Thomas.
Yes, in order to build residential on that back portion. But here is a very steep grade, almost 40 feet from one front to that.
You could also access Woodland, if you needed to run the other flag lock.
You would have to secure it.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So we have heard repeatedly from community members that the large concerns with additional residential units in mixed-use buildings. Several options exist for mitigating this concern. We could impose a limit on the number of dwelling units in that half-story that we discussed last month. This could be a limit on essentially definitive number, or you could say only 50% of that half-story could be residential. You could classify buildings over 5,500 square feet as a restricted or a conditional use. To give you a little bit of context, the first and second floors of 114 Thomas and the school building are about 5,200 square feet. There's additional floor area in the lower level, however. You could also restrict residential floor space to a ratio of 1 to 1 of the other permitted uses and the structure. Again, to give you a little bit of context, today that ratio is only 2 to 1. So we can make it 1 to 1. So again, these are ways to deal with some of those concerns that we have about density and intensity when you have mixed-use buildings.
How would the 1 to 1 work? 1 to 1, with which one was the other? So residential?
So for example, the first floor was office, and you had a 1 to 1 ratio. It was a two and a half story building. You could then have residential on the second floor, but you could then have no residential in the half-story.
Yeah. With the first floor is mall offices. Then still classify the 1 to 1, or is it still one square footage?
We don't care how many, the number of offices, we just care the amount of offices. So that's how that would work. So it's another way of controlling density as opposed to the calculation that Andy mentioned earlier.
I didn't understand that component. My number, do you mean the square footage? We're just talking about 4 to 4, right?
No.
We're 1 to 1. They don't care about how many offices are down there.
Yeah, we don't care whether there's one large office or 10 small offices.
But if you have 5,000 square feet, then you can only have...
5,000 square feet.
Square footage is square footage.
It's square footage is square footage.
Would it be one residence on the second floor?
Or you, depending upon, you could have two. So if you have 5,000 square feet of office on the first floor, you could have two dwelling units down with 2,500 square feet.
Could you have five that were 1,000 per?
Yes.
But you couldn't have any on the third floor.
Correct. There's not going to be a third floor ever, but you could not have any in the half-story.
But you couldn't have half-story in the 114 Thomas.
You could not have any residential in the half-story.
But you could have a half-story up there.
But you could have half-story up there. Storage, office, whatever you wanted to do. Or here's a, it could get a little even more complicated. You could say it's 1 to 1. You could say if it's 5,000 square feet on the first floor, that gives you 5,000 square feet of residential use. You could put 2,500 on the second floor, and 2,500 in the half-story or something for Thomas.
So like in the example, footprints of the Fifth Third Line, if you have a, say, were they around 14,000, 15,000 square foot?
Right.
So you could have, like, if you had a 700 square foot one-bedroom unit, you could have 20 units?
Potentially.
So you could have 40, 40 units right there?
Potential, depending upon how it shakes out. So we're dealing with dwelling units. We can do a 1 to 1 ratio. We can do dwelling units per acre. There are any number of ways to...
That would seem like the 1 to 1 ratio would do a whole lot more than anything.
It does matter. You could then not have anything in the half-story. That's the only thing that...
Still has a 40, 40 unit.
Which you potentially could have if you had 700 square foot units, yes.
Yeah, I don't know. I like that.
Okay.
So you're offering two suggestions, true potential.
There are three possible ways of doing this.
So if you do number two, you would do it as a conditional restricted use, then at least planning and zoning board of adjustment has the option to hear accept or deny. For your example, Andy, if somebody came in and put a 14,000 foot building on there, one foot, 20 units, if it was a conditionally used restricted use board of adjustment, then you know we don't have that intensity, correct? Or not?
The math that was just stated, was it correct?
So the example that she showed, 14,500 plus 18,000, it showed total square footage, which is both the first and the second floor, of 32,500. So I'm going to divide that by two, because half would be residential and half would be office.
Oh, so the 14,000 foot was the total of the first floor and the...
Yes, yes.
And the third floor?
No, there is a third floor, because we're not allowing it.
But not a half floor?
But not a half floor. It's a two-story building.
And you can't have those on the first floor?
Correct. Well, correct, yeah.
So then you'd have halves, then you'd have 22, 700 square foot.
Correct. But you can't, because, as was mentioned before, because parking, you would need parking allocation for each one of those parkings, and you need one space or two space for your building.
It depends on how many bedrooms.
Okay.
But still, I mean, you have the two are free, four are parking, perhaps, just a point on that. So that was more likely.
Yeah.
It just wouldn't be that nice to be able to do that.
So nobody's going to build them.
Unless we get the deal.
So if we go with the conditional restricted use, does that give us an opportunity to deny something like that?
So we're going to talk about what those restrictions should be. If you allow it as a conditional or restricted use, you are at least saying that it is appropriate in some way. It was going to have to be something significant as to why you wouldn't allow it. If they couldn't park it, for example, that would be reason to deny it. But you are accepting it as a use. You can't just think, I'm going to make this a residential use, and then we're not going to be able to allow it. It has to be something significant as to why you couldn't allow.
So what is your suggestion for us to deal with?
Well, let's move on a little bit first. I think any of these work. I think they're given... Actually, let me move to this one. I think your better bet is to make it a conditional use, because if you make it a conditional use, you can then put appropriate conditions on it, and we can decide what those appropriate conditions are. I don't think that it's necessarily of good faith to start trying to impose a limit on the number of units in the half-story. I think it's better to have a ratio, such as the 1 to 1. You can also regulate building depth, and you can further restrict the building width in the core. These are ways, if you do it as a conditional or restricted use, that you can put some fairly definitive standards on it.
Right now, the width is 150.
Right now, in the core, it's 150, and the supporting is 75, which is why those buildings were thin as they were on that Fifth Third Line.
This is in which part from, sorry?
So right now, we're dealing with both the core and supporting. So the first question...
75 feet, though, eliminate a lot of that?
I'm sorry.
It would reduce the 75 feet width, it would reduce...
It's already 75 feet in the supporting.
Okay.
So let's go back a little bit, because I think we need to think about this in a pretty holistic manner. Alternatively, we could opt for restrictions that apply to all development. You could restrict the building depth to 125 feet. For context, the West Banko building is approximately 110 feet deep. The 18 North building is approximately 144 feet deep. The Fifth Third Building is approximately 100 feet deep, including the area covering the drive-through lanes. You can classify all buildings over 5,500 square feet as a conditional use, whether or not they have residential use is unknown. So we have two different ways of thinking about this.
So what was in the example you gave with the buildings?
There wasn't a depth.
I mean, as you drew them, how long were they? How deep were they?
Probably 200 feet.
How wide is the 18 North? That's the widest building that's...
Are you talking about parallel with the avenue, or like, perfect matchup? The city building is the widest building outside of... This building is about 170 feet.
Actually, I can tell you what the city building is. So the city building that we're sitting in right now is 167 feet wide. And the building behind West Banko is 137 feet wide. That gives you some context.
18 is not fully aligned?
Basically, yeah.
65 feet? What is? I'm sorry.
It's about 135.
Is that the old, the old T? Yeah.
Yeah, it's still there.
It's about 150.
Yeah.
So we only have two buildings below 100 feet wide?
Well, as I just said, this building that you're sitting in is 167.
So it's only two buildings.
But again, we're not talking about width. We're talking about depth. Yeah. We'll get to that, I promise. So my first question for you is, do you want to impose additional development restrictions in the core and supporting subzoning districts? Yes or no? Beyond what's in the code? Yes.
To restrict residential?
Or all of it, in general? Do we want additional restrictions beyond what's currently in the code, in the draft UDO?
I think we need to talk about certainly, because I've heard a lot of concerns about the half-story housing residential and that 1 to 1 ratio tends to take care of that. I'd like to discuss it with everybody. And we've also heard concerns about not the width, but width and depth, just those numbers.
And then if so, do you want to regulate all buildings? Or you just want to regulate buildings containing residential usage?
Say all buildings.
That makes some sense, because restricting a commercial building is different. I mean, if somebody has a big office or wants to do whatever, they may need more space than that. And to put a restriction on that doesn't make sense. What if you can put residential above it? I can see having some kind of restrictions there. And again, I like the idea of making it a restricted use or conditional use, so at least there's an opportunity to add more things on to it.
The beauty of the conditional use is you really can be site-specific. You really then have the opportunity for the BOA to say, because of these circumstances, we need these additional restrictions beyond what's in the code.
So do we add a conditional use to them?
You can decide that any building over 5,500 square feet is a conditional use, which case it then goes to the BOA, and they give the opportunity to look at it very closely and decide if additional conditions beyond what's in the UDO need to apply at that site.
UDO?
Uh, UDO, which is what we're working on.
Is it 5,500? Does that come from 1,575?
No, where that comes from is that it's a pretty, it's a standard that we use. Basically, 5,500 square feet are small, or it's a small development. It's easily understandable, impacts that are easily understandable. It's something that is typically done by rights. When you start talking about classifying uses by square footage as a conditional use, that is a number lot by which you go from either smaller development to being in larger development. Therefore, it's about 100 square feet, so.
Could we impose a minimum square footage for a dwelling?
Sure.
Just to prevent, you know, not that maybe right now it isn't economical for a developer to do this, but let's say Tinder's now it is. To prevent a whole bunch of efficiency units in this more of a transient place right across the street through the middle of town. Where families are two, maybe just two-bedroom units? Or split footage, I think we solve that if you have a nice one bedroom.
Sure. I mean, we actually put a gross floor area in our one district's minimum floor area. We can do that, sure.
What would you recommend? Definitely, you know, in the third anyway. I would say a minimum of between 12 and 14, 13 units. Kind of match your profit. Would you want bedrooms?
It doesn't matter. It could be a two-bedroom, it could be a nine-bedroom.
I'd get a two-bedroom smaller than 12, 140.
All getting burned down for two bedrooms.
I don't think I would take the number of bedrooms so much as I would the square footage.
Yeah, I don't think we should do bedrooms. But first of all, look, so first of all, there's this sort of, I'm trying to narrow conversation, so forgive me for being rigid. Do we want to regulate all buildings or just buildings with residential uses? What do we want to do?
Residential makes sense.
All right. So we're going to have an opportunity to talk about building width later on in the conversation.
The only thing I would say about what you just said, Eric, is what if you have a commercial building that's willing to convert it to residential, then what?
Then it just has good work to do.
Well, if the building's built, it's built. Well, if the building was built, it's built.
So it would be a different use, so we would get the opportunity to put restrictions on it.
But would it be a zone change then?
No, certainly.
So who would go in front of it if they're changing the use from commercial to residential?
I'm sorry, I missed the question, the first part of the question.
Say somebody built a two-story office building and ten years down the road they decided, well, you know, it's not working out with the commercial, I'm going to put residential on my second floor. Who makes that decision?
So, if it's permitted by right and it's less and we have decided that you're not going to classify the use when it comes to planning. If you are going to, if you say anything over fifty-five hundred square feet is a conditional use, then it would then go to the BOA.
I mean, it wouldn't be a zone change necessarily.
It would just be at that point a conditional use. If it's over fifty-five hundred square feet. But the same plus fifty-five hundred square feet and they're going to convert it. Can it meet all, and it's restricted use? Can it meet all the conditions? The answer is yes, it comes to you. If they can't meet all the restrictions, it converts to a conditional use and it goes to the BOA. So.
Does that work?
With the part of the UDO?
So what I've heard is that we want to regulate buildings with residential uses. Yes or no? All right. How we want to regulate them?
So, I'm sorry, but like for example, the Highland just with the I. So that's part of this, because even if it's commercial, wouldn't you be allowed to maybe take that top floor and turn it into a farm?
I'm sorry, where are we?
What is the difference in the CBD? The difference between a commercial building and then allowing residential?
I think we're in support of this.
Well, we're talking about the core and the supporting. I'm not understanding your question, I'm sorry.
So I thought every building in the building?
Every building in the core and the supporting, yes, could be potentially allowing mixed-use buildings, meaning residential over non-residential.
So I'm kind of getting to your point. So if you were to build an office building, why can't you one day say, I'm turning the top floor into a park?
You can.
You could.
Oh, I thought you were saying you couldn't.
No, you could. You could. But then we would have to be faced with whatever restrictions you have. So for example, if it's a one-to-one, you've decided, okay, I'm getting sorry.
Well, I was saying, I guess what I was trying to point out is, if you're regulating just residential, somebody could build a commercial building and the building is built essentially in terms of massing size setbacks, all that stuff. And then later on, they can convert that for Florida residential whenever they want.
But again, it would still have to meet whatever state.
Well, you would still have to meet your square footage limitations that you're talking about.
Right, all right. So we want to further regulate buildings with residential uses. How do we want to do it? First thing we've heard is that we put a minimum square footage on the dwelling units. Yes, yes?
My thought or proposal is, is there a way to look at what we have as far as densities for properties? Let's say this property with a bank is right now, someone says, you know, I'm going to knock the bank down. We'll use it as an example. Let's put houses there. What would our density be if they were going to put houses in there? So why don't we, is it possible to use that same kind of concept? Density per acre for what we would put in a commercial zone? Maybe add a little bit extra because, you know, but not a lot, you know, significantly. So in other words, if we're going to put one home on typically a quarter acre or a half acre, then we have one unit per half acre or one unit per whatever value. Just trying to think that through versus trying to put all these restrictions on where to put the unit, how deep, how wide, and it seems like you're just going through a lot of extra generations. And really, the whole point is to restrict the number of units that are a piece of property.
We have lots of different properties in town. And to give you a frame of reference, so like where the block that is framed by Miller, Longley, Hagedorn and...
Just the classes.
I just lost it. Look for Thomas. I mean, that block, the dwelling, the density there is like fifteen dwelling units per acre. That's much more than anyone would ever imagine. And those are all single-family detached buildings. That's literally almost fifteen dwelling units per acre because of the size of those lots. I don't know that that's what you want to do in downtowns.
Do we have anything about lot coverage? Like you can only build up twenty-five percent of the total lot area, anything like that?
We don't currently. We certainly could put lot coverage restrictions on it. I think you're, because we've made a decision, y'all have, I think you've tentatively made a decision that you really only want to regulate the buildings with residential uses. I don't think a lot coverage is where you want to go with that. I think you'd be better off regulating the actual residential uses themselves. But I'm open to gab, do you have lot coverage?
Use the school district's building as an example. Right now, that's an office building. I don't know what the square footage is.
About fifty-two hundred square feet.
So. Twenty-six per floor.
Sweet little floor.
Yes. Okay. So the school board decides they don't want to be in there anymore, they sell the building. Somebody moves offices down on the first floor and they want to put apartments on the second floor. They could easily get to two apartments up there, I would think, at twenty-six hundred. So is that okay? If we're okay with that, then what's, then what kind of restrictions? Whatever you're proposing or you're saying are options are here. We don't need to worry about something like that, correct?
Not for that building.
Okay.
So here's an idea.
So what about the movie theater building? That's a lot bigger.
A lot built up there?
If offices stay on the first floor and the second floor, somebody wants to put apartments in there. Now that's larger, so it becomes a conditional use. If we say we're restricting the residential, making the residential as a conditional use.
So what I-
And then it goes to board adjustments and then they can put other restrictions on it. I don't know how many apartments you could fit in there. I don't know what size it is. Ninety-six hundred square feet per floor. Okay. Right back to density.
So we're not going to find out by now.
Hey, Andy, what did you say, get his numbers?
It's square foot. Well, like a two-bedroom, they're four rooms. I don't even know that they can put down one square feet.
Well, we better just put in square footage on apartments, like twelve hundred.
Well, that's what Andy said. So this is what I'm hearing you say.
You can put it, twelve hundred square foot of one-bedroom unit could be really nice for a young professional. You know, that's what I'm getting at, just where it isn't efficiency, where you're, you know, you're making.
I agree. So what I'm hearing then is this. If it is less than fifty-five hundred square feet, it's not a conditional use, but it still has a restriction on one-to-one on the floor area on the number of square footage of the uses. And each unit has to be at least twelve hundred square feet.
So when it comes to eighteen North, you have to have restrictions as far as parking? Like what's the parking there since that's probably parking on behind there, so I'd have to leave that parking. So will they require they have their own parking for rest of that?
If we use that as an example, yes, they're going to have to try to find parking somewhere.
They wouldn't necessarily have to provide it on their property.
They wouldn't necessarily have to provide it on their property, but for example, there is a third floor down there and they could potentially gut that dress stop and put parking under there. I mean, that would be an option as well, right? As to providing it on-site.
What other parking restrictions are required, you know, how is that working?
I'll tell you what it is. It's based on.
It used to be one and a half or one bedroom.
Does anyone know what the One Highland place, those homes, like I guess the grand city is for square foot, like how many units we have in that place?
I think there's eighteen units, if I'm not mistaken. I think there's forty-eight parking spaces underneath the family.
And the parking requirement for multi-family is one space for one-bedroom, one and a half spaces for two-bedrooms, and for three-plus bedrooms, it's two spaces per unit.
So if we, so what you're saying is, let's use an example, since they don't have their own parking lot, it's probably parking on behind it, they would have to somehow find parking that has to be on-site, off-site for them in order to get something.
Usually residential has to be provided on-site. Usually that is the case.
So could we, is that in our restrictions?
Yes.
Although in that case, since it's adjacent, you know, I don't know that they, I can think they could make the case that you could park in the parking lot if they already have that.
But again, let's don't get hung up on that particular side. We're trying to just make the general regulations here, so.
I'm trying to figure out how would they allow something like that sort of restrictions in order to get this.
Well, so they will always have to provide parking for residential uses. That's a given. If you make it a conditional use, anything over fifty-five hundred square feet, using eighteen North as an example, they would have to go in front of the BOA. Again, you could have reasonable conditions placed on it. If you use the example of one-to-one, they could be limiting the amount of residential that could go in that building. So still using eighteen North, you wouldn't be able to then convert that lower level to residential because that would then exceed your one-to-one ratio. And it would be a conditional use because it's over fifty-five hundred square feet. So we have taken a box that is this big and we just made it this big.
Now, what does it mean that it has three stories already? And I think it does have apartments, it's a three-story building. Does that mean, is that in their first floor, which means the basement sub-level is in their first floor? Or is it first floor?
No, what I was saying is they would not be able to convert that lower level to residential because it would exceed the one-to-one ratio.
I mean, so they could convert any level then?
They could potentially convert the second floor.
Okay, but not the third?
Not the third, not the lower level, because you would exceed the one-to-one ratio.
Well, you could do the third and not the second.
Yes, yes.
It's just a ratio, it doesn't matter.
We don't care where it goes. All right. So this is what I've heard. We're regulating all buildings with residential. We want a one-to-one ratio. We want twelve hundred square feet per unit. And anything over fifty-five hundred square feet is a conditional use.
What about restricting the depth?
We haven't gotten there yet.
So you need a difference more important between a digital market, fifty-five hundred or more fifty-five hundred. What's the difference?
So if it's a conditional use, if it's not a conditional use, means it's a, a usage is by right and it would only come to the planning commission. And if it meets all the standards, the planning commission by law has to approve it. And they cannot place any conditions on it that are in any way outside of the numeric numbers that are in this code. If it is a conditional use, it bypasses the planning commission. It goes to the board adjustment. And the board adjustment then has to place conditions that are reasonable based on the development. So it is a much higher level of review than the site plan, which is what comes in front of the planning commission for a by-right use.
So in that case, they're not able to waive the numerical conditions? It's just they can put additional conditions on it?
Correct. They would still have to meet the standards, but they can place additional ones on that are reasonable. So for example, if there was a grade change, the building was here and the residential was down in detached, single-family, next door was down here, they could say, you know what? Your screening trees that are planting usually have to be six feet, but because of this grade change, they now have to be eight feet. That would be a reasonable condition based on that site-specific situation. That they would then have the ability to place on that development.
How does the planning committee feel about, in that case, skipping you guys and going to the floor?
We just look at the site plan, the development plan. And she's talking about a lot more than just looking at the development plan. She's talking about the building plans, elevations, all that kind of stuff. We really only confirm that the site plan meets the conditions.
Would there be any advantage to you looking at it as well? In that respect?
They can't.
They can't.
Because.
And you've got to remember, all this is against the design review board.
It will all go with the design review board. But yes, Kentucky revised statutes require that conditional use go to the BOA. That's not a discretion that I have.
But this limits everything in the C D U two-floor experience.
It limits, if it has a residential use, it limits based on what we're talking about to a one-to-one ratio.
Four feet, two stories.
Or.
It's going to have a lot of stories. It has to be office space of sorts.
Or they could have it, right? They could have half office, half residential on second floor, residential back in the half-story. You know, if that's a building code nightmare, but that's a whole other issue. All right. So then, Eric, you had mentioned potentially an additional restriction on building depth. Do you want to talk about that more?
Do we need that now that we've established this?
I'm not sure that you do. I think now that we have a one-to-one ratio, I think you're in good shape.
I would like to talk about, if you could go back a couple slides to the thing, oversight with the. I can't round my head around having to do the square foot building in fifteen, fourteen and a half thousand square foot buildings. I think in my mind, that's, that would be a bunch of houses, so there'd be a bunch of houses that you have potentially needs to, I just don't see that. And so I can't round my head around that being a good addition to the city.
Well, we could also buy it during the lives, three or four. So how do we restrict that?
Well, there are a couple of different ways. You can restrict the building depth. You can restrict lot coverage. But again, don't forget, we talked about, there's a lot of other things that go into this. You're going to have to be dealing with stormwater. You're going to have to be dealing with parking. These were just rough numbers to show you what's out there. This assumes that you are able to put all of your stormwater underground. That's not a good assumption. But this is the worst case, assuming that someone does it all underground, there's the stormwater underground and they are able to either to go get a waiver for some parking and provide all the parking underneath because of that changing grade. But the problem with that is, how are they going to get to that parking?
I understand it's worst-case scenario, but it's still in discussion. So I think what's the possibility of taking that, and I think we talked about this and I apologize if we're going back to it. What's the possibility of making that whole, that whole lot in the back lot just really actually something?
So we're going to get to that in terms of allowing single-family by rights in the supporting. Because I'm sure there are few.
And you say by right, there's an option.
Yeah. That means by right, meaning it can be permitted option. You can still do other things. But that doesn't address your other concern of, do you really want to allow large buildings in this particular location?
The other flip side you have to consider is the more restrictive you make it, the more likely that the third building is going to remain there, even if it's on a bank. And is that something you want in the CBD?
Yeah, I understand that if you could completely pass that down.
Well, I mean, just architecturally, do you want that bank to stay there for the next?
Also something to compel process when the time comes.
Here's the other thing I would say is, if you have buildings that can't redevelop because of the number of restrictions that you've placed on them, you could potentially end up with buildings that become a white elephant. It's too expensive to redevelop and then you want to end up with less desirable tenants in them or they're vacant. So I just want you to understand that the more restrictions you place on a lot, the more difficult it's going to be to redevelop it. And you could end up with less desirable uses in some of these bank buildings. Not necessarily this third, but in some of the other ones because they can't be developed on site. The other thing that happens is the more restrictions you place on the site, the more likelihood that people do actually have to buy additional lots and do a larger development. So for example, the more you restrict the lot, you're going to have to tear down, potentially you would have to tear down Guardian Bank and US Bank and combine the lots and do a larger development. The fewer restrictions you have, they might decide to do a smaller incremental development. So just keep that in the back of your mind, that while you're thinking about worst-case scenarios, the more restrictions you place, the more likely you're going to have a situation where someone has to do a larger development in order to make good work.
Like, then what would be an example of that under the other?
Um, forgive me? You could have a vape shop. You could have.
Anything that needs a drive-through?
Well, we're not allowed a drive-through.
Well, there's our reason.
But there's already drive-through there, so it's a non-conforming use. So you could have a drive-through that is there. You could have those, or it could just be sitting vacant. Or you could have re-logging uses. It goes from a vape shop to a CBD store to whatever else, right? So I apologize if I didn't see the idea one way.
So nothing available to restrict somebody buying fixed lots and doing all of that?
No, we have the ability to prevent someone from buying- No, we have the ability to prevent someone from buying lots and consolidating.
A building with.
Well, yeah, we have building with standards, we have building separation standards.
We're going to come back to that, is that what you said?
No, we're going to come back to width.
And I like, somebody said something about lot coverage?
We could do lot coverage.
Wouldn't depth help too though?
I'm sorry?
Depth.
Depth would do it as well.
What is the depth? Do we have one right now?
So let's, as we talked about. So to give you a sense of depth, the 18 North building is 145, 150 feet deep. The fifth third bank building is approximately 100 feet deep, including all of the drive-through lanes. And West Banco building is approximately 110 feet. No, they're just a representative sample. West Banco is a small development, it's a smaller building, so it's 116 feet deep. Obviously, 18 North is large, used to be the theater.
What are you, that's what is the maximum depth now then?
Right, now we'll have one.
So what, what would start off with one on?
Do you want to do it for all buildings or?
Make it helps?
It's certainly going to give you more comfort that you're not going to get a building that's too 150.
Yes. And if there's only that a lot, they could do that anyways.
What's the depth of the US Guardian Banco?
160, exactly. I'm going to build a lot.
The building?
A lot.
The lot, one of those, yeah.
You guys consider drive-throughs all the same? I can, I can also just tell how deep is that lot.
Yeah, the lot's 196 feet deep, the building's 160 feet. So, you know, if you're looking at a reasonable restriction of building depth, it's about 125 feet. You do not want to go, you know, back 150 feet, which is what, you know, 18 North is.
How do we find something to do? Why do we need to do that?
Okay, for all buildings, for all, or just buildings with residential usage. All buildings?
Thank you guys for bearing with us all the rest of the questions.
So, and back to the lot coverage, can we go back to talking about lot coverage?
Sure.
You know, it seems like that would stop the advantage of collecting properties, wouldn't it?
Not necessarily. Many of your lots are at 100% coverage right now.
Who's that?
Meaning, for example, where 18 North is, it's 100% lot coverage.
Right, but what I mean is, if you're building something and you collect all these properties, it's lot coverage and you can't cover it. And just across, just the fifth third section.
But the thing is, if it's all one zoning district, folks have to street and creating non-conformity wherever we get it.
So we could do a.
So why can't we just say, like, I've heard that argument a lot, and it seems to me that, why can't we just say in there that if you already have it, you get it?
Well, you already do, your grant provided, but if 18 North burned down tomorrow, then they couldn't build it back.
But why can't you let them?
Because you're saying in the zoning that you can't, because you're saying you can't cover the whole lot here.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we potentially think about lot coverage only in the supporting sub-zoning district? Because that is where we have vacant lots that could potentially redevelop through intensive.
And 75 by 125, is that 9400 square feet, is that right? So we did 75 by 125 deep, 9500?
Looks like lot coverage on US Banco.
Frank, I need you to hold on.
All right, we're going to regulate building depth in all, in both the core and supporting to 125 feet. And we're going to do lot coverage in supporting. We're making Frank do math over here.
I need to figure out all the two, I need to do your all impervious area, not just the building.
Let's just do the buildings. You should lot coverage by building.
So how would we set the appropriate?
That's what I'm thinking of. I mean, I'm thinking, my guess of it is going to be roughly 65, 70%, but I'm asking Frank to do that.
26. I mean, the US Bank building, just the building, is only 14%.
Okay, just the building?
Just the building. But the impervious area probably is three times size.
But we want to do all of it, we want to do all. You could do lot coverage by building and do lot coverage, which includes the building and all impervious services, driveways, parking lots, at all.
What is the standard for supporting CBD?
Well, truthfully, most central business districts don't have lot coverage as a standard, because it's a central business district.
Well, ours is unique with the supporting, the houses, I mean, except the tree.
Right.
So is there, are there any examples that you?
All right, so US Bank building would give you, with all the impervious surfaces and the building is 65%. Is the lot coverage. So. How does that sound? US Bank building with all impervious surfaces and the building, the lot coverage is 65%. 65 or 70?
I mean, 65 is low.
Yeah, I mean, 65 is low. And with all the other things, all the other restrictions you're putting out there, you're making it very difficult to develop.
That timing makes sense. They may be asking for them, whether we take 65 or 100. And whether or not they get them, they count for their vote on that, and no less than official vote on.
Well, if it's unchanged.
Oh, we do?
Yeah.
It's starting to change, but if it's a, if it's a variance or a way more, then it doesn't come to council.
Frank, correct my, or check my math here, but if it's a 65% on 75 by 125, that's 8148, which is the footprint, the footprint would be 3,900 square feet.
So at least, I had a question, so the lot coverage period, that would be under the BOA? Well, 75 by 125 is the maximum, even on larger lots, right?
So right now, in the central business district, the planning commission can't give waivers to everything but height. So this could be something that it's related to the planning commission as well. So we could err on the size of smaller. And, and as you said, when the site plan comes in, the planning commission can then evaluate. So 70%? 65, all right.
And we're defining that by impervious area?
Yep.
So impervious pavement doesn't count?
Correct. So the impervious.
Hard surface? No, that's still not regular. So it would be impervious?
Yes, the answer is yes. That's the answer I'm giving.
Is it valid?
No, because I think the point is, if somebody comes in with impervious pavement, they're, they're not. You're trying to say if somebody comes in with impervious pavement, that shouldn't be counted towards the.
But I'm asking, I'm not saying.
I think that it would be counted towards the ratio. So it's not an impervious surface, and it's not hard surface, paved, paved, paved or roofed surface?
I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking.
It's typically, it is typically impervious surface. It's typically impervious. And that means parking.
If less they put, like, impervious.
But if they use impervious papers, then it typically is not included in lot coverage. We can define it however we choose to do that. It's about this day's question.
Right, like, the sanitation district only looks at impervious area. So that means water can't.
Means water can't go through it.
Well, you can put impervious pavement, which is, you know, there's various types of landscaping you put in that lets the water. And then it wouldn't count.
That seems to be that 65% of those restrictions, again, you can track that test because it might be wrong, but it would be a 3,900 square foot feet or developed surface footprint. To me, with a, that's a medium-sized house with a driveway, that's not necessarily. It just seems like it's all.
It is small.
That's what we're wanting, right? Yeah, that's your question. It's a small house. I reckon you're counting the driveway.
And that's, I reckon that is where the driveway.
You're saying, if I bought a lot, I'm going to basically don't take it back. Correct, correct. With the pay.
With the pay. In the patio, the grass.
And you can, again, you use lot, like, the lots on the inside of the owner, and one way of having one, and shaw. I mean, those are closer to 80%. Impervious source.
So what you say, 65% impervious pavement? Should put parking lots?
Say that again.
65% allowed for impervious lots? Building size is 65% for the parking lots.
Extra?
So I think, I think that, that, just, if you look at the US Bank building, the building is only 15% or 14 or 13 or whatever I said a few minutes ago. But the developed area is 65, so if I take 65 minus 15, the building's 15 and the pavement is 50. So, I mean, you're saying you want to, you want to allow 65 just for the building?
I'm just saying, I'm just saying one of our options are, you know what I mean? I'm trying to, because I think they're right, I think there is something that's on the side.
But again, we are already, well, for buildings that contain residential uses, we've already made things over 5,500 square feet a conditional use. So we are already restricting intensity and density in that situation. But we could say, you know, lot coverage by building at 65%. And that, you know, broadens the envelope slightly.
So with your setbacks, would it do that anyway?
No, not necessarily.
Well, I know not necessarily, but doesn't?
No.
Doesn't? Do we know what the setbacks are?
Yes, so it's 25 feet in supporting, it's a front, 25 feet to the back, and 14. The total of 14, so 77 on each side. So those are not great numbers.
So that's shrink, you're also going to.
Oh, she was saying, so the lot is about 196, you take 50 off of back, the back and the front, and then 14 either side.
No, 7, total of 14. So yeah, you're not, the setbacks are not going to get you 65%.
Yes, I was just going to say, so on the fifth third example up here, then that, just with the 65%, that would shrink it.
Dramatically.
Pretty much. And that looked like it was 80% coverage, 85?
Probably. All right, so we get 65% by buildings? All right. Moving on. All right. Now we need to talk about building width. So again, let's think about what we've just done.
I always question what I asked before. Is this now an issue now that we've done these other things we just said?
That's about where I'm about to go. So, we have decided that anything over 5,500 square feet that has residential uses is a conditional use. We have restricted building depth to 125 feet. And we've restricted lot coverage by building in supporting sub-zoning districts to 65. And so the mayor's question is, do we even need to talk about this in terms of maximum width in the building? Well, so in the face tree draft, the maximum building width was 185 feet because the approximate width of one high line. In April, the planning commission requested that the maximum building width in the core, again, we just talked about the core, be reduced to 150 feet. For context, the city building is 167 feet, and what's in the building behind West Banco is 137 feet wide. So that gives you some context.
So putting 150 foot width would help?
So when the city council discussed maximum building width back in June, the question was, what about this lot? Because it is approximately 150 feet wide. The development standards in the core sub-zoning district also regulate ground story at street level facade deviations, and they are required to have a deviation every 35 feet. In addition to that, the design required side standards mandate that buildings with more than 150 feet of width and front edge incorporate coordinating building massing techniques that make large buildings and divide into, looking like as if they divided to multiple buildings, such as the building that you see on the screen. And I apologize, this is not a great photograph.
So does that work? You're saying that that's what's in?
So that's what's currently in the code. The maximum building width is 150 feet. You have to have facade deviations every 35 feet. And a building that's 150 feet wide or more has to look as if it's more than one, one or two buildings. So, should the maximum width in the core be reduced?
How much is 75 feet?
Yes, yes.
Why is FYI the lot, the boost office is 100 feet?
I was talking, it's not 100 feet.
Why are they different?
If you take 150 feet and you're going to, you're going to make them make a break every 50 feet, did you say?
So they have a, for a vertical side, you need to have a 35.
35 feet, and it's going to look like more.
And if it's more than 150 feet, then it actually has to look like multiple buildings. And that's only the only spot in the core where this can happen, where you could have a larger building constructed, assuming that that part goes away.
So we're talking about a relatively compact area between the CBD core and supporting?
So the supporting.
You can almost see the whole thing, you know, when you're standing in the active site. Why, why, you know, double from 75 to 150, I know it's coming down, but why? Why is it different then? Why wouldn't we keep it consistent?
So the idea is that the core is more intense because it is your core. So that's the idea behind having a larger building width in the core. And then the support is supposed to be, the supporting is supposed to be lessening intensity as you're moving outside of the core, outside of the district. However, you know, the community members who are not happy with the idea of having a building at 150 feet wide.
So how would it, if you want to make it 75, and how, why does the, this building we're sitting in right now?
167 feet.
So then how would we allow ourselves to do that? If this place burnt down, how would we allow ourselves to build this back the way it is? Because it doesn't meet our standard in 75. Or my opinion?
This building right now, that we're sitting in, would actually be non-conforming because it is, because it's in the supporting sub-zoning district and the maximum building width is 75 feet. It is considered a non-conforming structure and could be built back if something happened as long as it was not the city's fault. And it happened within the building potential, within six months, so. And the city's debt, sorry.
The point is, we wouldn't be able to tear this down and build without us being the city. That's the only way we would do it.
That's true. You could not, so if you decided to tear it down, this was a thing.
We'd have to make two buildings.
You'd have to set two buildings, yeah, separated by 15 feet.
You can't write it that it exists as it is today, that you can do, you know, in terms of width, you can do the other laws, and you can take it down, put it back up the same way, but we're talking about new structures? You can't?
Not really, because what's the, what's the public policy behind that? It's what we have. So, so you're, what you're saying is, we like what we have, but nothing new can ever accomplish the same thing? Right. Right, right.
So you can't replicate what you've already had?
It's always.
A little bit, a little bit of history, when, before we did the, the, you have on this building, there was serious discussion about tearing it down. Until we found out how good the structure was, how well-built the structure was. But if we do this, then we wouldn't have been able to tear down the building.
No.
We'd have to build several buildings that are separate. Whereas, I think there's a misunderstanding about this 150 foot width, with the changes in the facade. And in fact, there was a design early on, when we were looking at a new design for the city building, that was essentially like that picture you showed a few mi, a few frames back, where it looked like a downtown area with different facades, but it was one building. But it looked like five or six or seven different buildings, with flat roofs and had the different, all the different historic-looking stuff. And that was one of the designs. But if you were 75 feet. But if you were sixty, seventy-five feet, then you'd actually have to have a break. And if you have to have a break, then you're gonna have to have fourteen feet between the two buildings, seven feet on each one, no.
So in the supporting, you have to have fifteen feet between them?
Fifteen feet between buildings, then you have to... We wouldn't be able to build this.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the difference.
Because, from a practical standpoint, what you're saying is, in the future, what we want are these standards. And if something happens to, something that comes down, this is our vision, and therefore that, whatever goes on to that lot should look like our vision.
Yeah.
So that's what you're saying with this?
Yes.
So, we're talking about the seventy-five feet for where this property sits? That's how it is written?
That's how it's written right now, and I'll just give you context using this building. All we're talking about, we're talking about for the core only, is the one-hundred-and-fifty feet.
So with regard to this, um, this property burnt down, I mean, it wasn't that hard to create a new professional office. Why couldn't we create a new little independent city building and allow that?
But they're, you're exempt anyway.
Yeah.
You're exempt.
Yeah, but the whole idea is you don't wanna create all these little independent zones. We're, we're trying to make things simpler, not more complex than they already are.
And it, and it's getting pretty complex at this point. So the question before you is, in the core, you have one block left, which is essentially the block where West Banko is. Do you want to have a maximum building width that's less than one-hundred-and-fifty feet?
I think the one-hundred-and-fifty feet with the, with the facade divisions for a downtown area is a perfectly reasonable thing. If anybody's been through Madison, Indiana, it's probably one of the longest surviving historic districts in the west. And the buildings are side by side, but they all look like different buildings. Some of them are a single building, they've connected them together. So I don't see any, any reason why in our, in the central core, that we wouldn't wanna have the option for someone to come in and build something that looks like four or five different buildings.
But it does.
Seventy-five foot wide building is a small building. I mean, that's bigger than, we're getting, we're talking about getting square before. All those apartment buildings we're getting square are, are bigger. Because I'm gonna do multiple seventy-five feet.
Well, as I said, the post office is not seventy-five feet. They're already in savings bank. Seventy-five.
And, I mean, I'm adding the size. I mean, I'm getting you as much as you possibly can, I'm not gonna overhang and everything, like the actual building. Yeah. The actual building is sixty.
The doubt is little.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just talking the front, the front.
If you grew with loading dock, it's not the, not the rest of it, it's only it's.
So then, your, your center, your core downtown is not gonna look like a downtown, it's gonna look like a little building fifteen feet, a little bit of fifteen feet. Be all these gaps in there, so it's not gonna look like a downtown. Again, it's just the core, I'm not talking about the outskirts areas. I'm talking about where we now have buildings that are together, like a downtown is normally done. We would no longer be able to do that. If the building came down, we'd have to have the fifteen feet between the building and it would be the seventy-five feet.
I think I'd be, it would be seventy-five feet. Around.
Yeah.
That's what you want, wouldn't seem like. But, you know, one-fifty seems like a lot for, where these areas are, it, one-fifty is really just saying, get a, parallel the building down so you can fit that one-fifty building on. So why couldn't we, you know, think of talking about one-twenty-five or one-hundred?
So let's don't forget that, you know, all of these buildings are in historic districts. And you tear them down, you wanna have them in front of the designer report and get a COA for demolition annually bill. So, you know, what we're really talking about is right there. That's pretty much the only place where this happens, this is applicable. Because that's one-hundred-and-fifty feet across the front of there.
So anything longer than a hundred feet would sit perpendicular to Port Thomas Avenue? So, should I do that? So like a hundred-foot wide building could, that, in front of it would sit parallel to Port Thomas Avenue?
Will that do elevation, yes? It could.
How about the city got a hundred year, two star, that's not our logic anyhow.
We're, we're coming up on one-twenty, and we can only legally take law of thousands to one-twenty, two-twenty.
So for a frame of reference, including the drive-through, that building is one-hundred feet wide. Nine feet wide, sorry.
What do you think then? I actually don't think about that five. And, uh, what would, what could happen to it? I think the...
Well, you're already here.
How can we do a building sitting back?
I mean, you're, right now, that lot, if you, if you would put them all together, I mean, you're still looking at, you guys want sixty-five percent on there, so.
That's only the supporting.
That's obvious, that's not here.
Correct. I don't need it.
Yeah, no, thank you.
It's still the fifteen.
But we haven't got. So a hundred feet, one-hundred-and-twenty-five? I'm sorry?
Originally, we were at one-eighty.
We were at one-eighty because that was, or one-eighty-five because that was the one high line. It went down to one-eighty-five, one-fifty, back in April. And now we're discussing...
How long is that town center building that they have in the store and floor and walk in it?
It's like one-hundred-and-thirty-eight or something.
Uh, I'm taking a second. It's one-hundred-and-thirty-seven feet.
One-hundred-and-thirty-seven?
Approximately, we're using GIS.
How does that one work because of the way it's positioned up the streets? Is it not based upon Port Thomas and, and, and the width bound to the hallway?
So if we were talking about that, yes, that would be the case, but we're just using this as a, a reference to give you an idea of how. But yes, in general, the building width will be measured along the front property line.
So the length and depth is based on position wherever the, say, the developer wishes? For a one-hundred-and-fifty-foot wide building to fit on that property, the front of the building would have to be on Miller.
So what we're most concerned about is the width of the building on South, South Port Thomas Avenue. That's the issue for the eighth thing else. So that would be considered the front, and that would be the width, and then the depth would be along the way. Or Miller, Miller, sorry.
Like depends on the requirements?
Well, in this particular case, we're going to make it because we are considering Port Thomas Avenue as our five inch street. That's where it's going, the furniture is going to be.
So the width of the lot is a lot bigger?
The width of that lot, including the, the park, is one-hundred-and-fifty feet.
Okay, so you still have to have size setbacks?
No, you wouldn't.
Why?
Because it's a downtown space.
So what do you think with, with that?
The look we want in the core, central business district, we probably need a hundred and fi- you need to have like three or four businesses together. You don't wanna divide it by fifteen feet. It won't look like a central business district.
It'll just look like a bunch of separate buildings.
One-hundred-and-fifty feet, one, one protocol.
I agree with one-hundred-and-fifty because of the size of that block.
No, but again, in the restriction, it's showing that the, the building would be built to look like separate buildings.
But it doesn't.
Yeah, they already... So.
There is a one.
What's the root of that? Now, did you say that this, what we're looking at here, well, I go ninety, out to the...
Drive-through, yeah. So what's the width, including the drive-through, is about ninety feet?
What's our typical storefront to the, on, to Port Thomas there?
So in, in Port Thomas, it varies greatly, there's nothing typical there. But the storefronts in general, thirty.
Well, you got hello, thirty, you got eighteen more, I mean, there's just...
Yeah, but in general storefronts...
There's more that's gonna be built.
In general, storefronts are anywhere between twenty-five and thirty-five feet, generally speaking, in downtown.
So I'm thinking, you know, if you want, you probably wanna put up three, we're looking at, you had three single structures, something like that. So, just doing math, I mean, that's up like, that's a hundred and five, be it three thirty-five foot stories.
Hundred-and-fifty, right? Hundred and five, right?
Hundred and five. But nobody's gonna build a thirty-foot wide building in it. So what is the, not the...
We just decided the depth was going to be one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet.
Let's go one-hundred feet.
Just check the width of the building, so it lastens one-hundred-and-fifty foot width of that block. And you're gonna have, like you have in the block with, that goes from the art center, the women's club, down to the, um, the school building, the... Yeah, because now they have a parking lot on the side.
I'll be a...
So you would end up with facade, 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 and a parking lot or whatever on the side of fifty. If you make the restriction a hundred feet, then, then you'd have that, or you'd have your fifteen feet and another twenty-foot wide building.
Or potentially you could have outdoor dining, I mean, there would be a way to have...
So that would be how you, like, or driveway?
Or, or you could have a driveway.
You're gonna get multiple driveways going through there.
I mean, one-twenty-five is a little bit more, where you can still, like, be creative and make it, you're not...
Building.
And then you can still get some nice, not little plain storefronts, you know, nice, nothing, another...
If the whole width is one-hundred-and-fifty, one-hundred-and-twenty-five, like, you just, yeah.
I can't picture a little alley somewhere, neither, I don't know.
Remember the song, you should work out what it's there at.
Right, right. And you can make that...
High restriction forty feet, right?
Correct.
High restriction forty feet, so... So high restriction forty feet, one-to-one ratio, right?
If it's, has residential in it, it's one-to-one.
One-to-one ratio, forty feet, one-to-one, fifty.
Alright.
Lot restrictions, guys.
Alright, so we cut the...
So, Elisa, just real quick, with the one-hundred-and-twenty-five foot, is that also a variance from the, under the perjury of the relevant commission?
It's not a variance, it's a waiver.
A waiver, uh, it could be waiver.
It could be waiver, but again, I mean, we are setting these numbers out there, and this is your standard.
Right, I understand.
Well, I just wanna say too, I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page, planning commission too, because we are squeezing this pretty good, and, and for, for good reason, obviously, we all, but I think from the conversation, it seems like we're all, we all want basically the same thing. It's just whatever do you take to get there? And I am still sensitive about what Elisa said earlier, I think we all are, where we don't wanna put ourselves in a spot where, you know, we're only allowing for potential uses that maybe aren't desirable. And would certainly change the character of the town, whether it's from an aesthetic appeal or, you know, the nature of, of the use itself. And so are we comfortable as a group, and I mean council and planning commission, with what we're talking about, with the, all the restrictions we have, including the, you know, if it's one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet wide, forty feet tall, one-to-one ratio, is that, is that... Are, are, I don't wanna get to a point where we are, uh, you know, we're, we're limiting it too much, do we feel that we are?
We gave you a, a draft that we felt comfortable with.
Right.
And, and those numbers that we gave you, we were comfortable with.
You were comfortable with one that reduced those?
You have the right to do that because you are the ultimate authority here to vote on it.
Understood.
But those numbers, we were comfortable with.
Understood, I understand that, obviously, are you comfortable with one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet wide, down from one-fifty?
You think it's too small?
Well, we went from one-eighty to one-fifty. I mean, it's, it seems funny to be horse trading about numbers like this, I mean, if the lot there is one-hundred-and-fifty feet wide, uh, and it's in the CBD where you generally don't have side yards, one-hundred-and-fifty seemed to make sense to us.
I think for a frame of reference, right now, the current, that building that we're living in is, is one-hundred-and-fifty, some one-hundred-and-fifty-six feet long. And if it's fit on Miller, and that means... When you're essentially at a hundred, having it one-hundred-and-fifty feet wide by one-hundred-and-twenty-five...
One-hundred-and-twenty-five wide, yeah.
You're, you're not getting, I mean, you're getting very similar building. You could put multiple roads there too, you don't have to put a board.
But you could.
If, if that's the only place that's really a lot.
So what are you saying?
Don't they also have a, a development period where they can add another building currently right now?
They gotta develop here.
I mean, in old, like twenty years old? There'd still be subject to zoning.
I mean, there's, there's old documents of possibilities, that there's something. There's no grandness.
Like, just the building that's there, and I know that was kind of your, just the building that's there, we're talking about making the, um, to essentially allow the same kind of building you go in, roughly the same size. And at one-hundred-and-fifty feet wide, like, what are we talking about?
So, we said one-hundred-and-fifty-five feet deep, but keep in mind, we're gonna talk this in a minute, second. The zoning district for the core in this location runs, right now, as it's currently sitting, but we're gonna talk about it again in a minute, behind West Banko, everything behind West Banko is in the supporting. So, but we're gonna be getting to that in just a second, so. Well, we're about to get to talk about that.
It originally was, and then got pulled back, right?
So, originally, let's just, let's just keep our conversation on, on building width right now, and we'll get to that in just a second. But think about, when we're thinking about developing, that we're developing this side, only think about where West Banko currently sits, right now. And do, are you comfortable with reducing the building width to one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet?
I still, I still think it's...
I really like agreeing to say that we're parking, we're sure we're on there.
But the city doesn't own it, and you have to have some ability to use land. We can't just simply say we like the park there and not do anything with it, the city doesn't own that, so.
I still like it, I mean, I would, I like, I'm only gonna try to sell here, you know, so, I'm, it just seems like we don't have a lot of buildings. That why, did you talk about why these things? I think it's one height, eighty-four, you know? How, how long did you say, eighteen or fourteen, sixty feet? Right, all the other buildings in between are small, you know, they're connected, you know, and you say those, those, those are...
It's the same structure.
So, and then also, here we are on one-hundred-and-twenty-five, we have two residential stories, right across the street from a three-story, one-hundred and eighty, no liability, also now we're boxed in.
You don't box it in, you cannot box it in, your lot is way too wide. You're not having enough building height to box it in. But, yes, you would have taller buildings in the core, which is what this is, right? This is your, your downtown area.
Deep, deep, just for reference, the school district building, if you go south, not to the subway building, not including the subway or the operations building, it's about one-hundred-and-ninety feet. And none of those buildings are fifteen feet apart, some of them are that apart.
So that looks like one building.
As, as far as point, it's almost like one building, whether it's more than one building or not.
But what, like, you think about what it'd look like with the block towers, torn down. West Banker is torn down, and you have a one-hundred-and-fifty-five foot building wide on it. Might turn it forward.
So if I say one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, given the width of this block, you are at least saying some portion of it's not going to have a building. You're right. However, that doesn't mean someone couldn't buy those lots, consolidate them, and fit, you know, three seventy-five foot wide buildings there.
That's good.
Which again, is going to...
It's a one-hundred-and-twenty-five foot from the right side of that tower to the end of West Bank.
It's 125 foot from the right side of that tower to the end of West Bank.
Folks, this is my help, uh, grabbed this out of the office, this is what it looked like before. I mean, this is what it looked like before, it was pretty solid, all the way across.
This is approximately taken in the 50s based on cars, and this bank is the bank, West Banko Bank right now, and here is Lumley.
Mallard.
Mallard.
Sorry.
My tower.
And then here's the two story building where the clock tower is.
Yeah.
So this gives you a visual.
Of what it was.
Of what it was.
Three buildings.
And that's the idea of it from behind, taking the 150 foot building and, and. Architecturally. Architecturally dividing it so it could look exactly like.
I think you need 150 to get, like, kind of. You want to have a group or a restaurant, one that's gonna take more than that, bigger than 35.
Yeah.
I think you need 150.
It'd still look a lot different.
Before we put it in there.
In effect, though, what's going on on your side of the street?
The building's architecture, you know, it's different than one wall, you know.
Well, that's what she was trying to describe, and that's what I think is, is missing. The 150 foot is still requiring that that building get broken up, so it looks like.
Architecture.
Architecture of five different buildings that allow a business to be in there that needs more than a 25 foot building.
I mean, that was the whole point of the design review, right? That was why they were agreeing.
And the height restriction's gonna help versus the other side.
Right.
It looks more like, well, the old used, you know, the main drag is a lot of this.
Right.
Maybe an 125.
I, I defer to, these guys all have backgrounds in this kind of stuff, they're very in the natures, and I think it still does what we're expecting. Again, we're talking about the core, I mean, if we want to say we don't want any business in our core, and we can't put residential there, that's a whole different story, but I don't think that's the case, I think we want to see our businesses in the business core, so if the width is 150 feet, and that's their recommendation with the vision, I've.
And you gotta remember, and I've said this in the past, we've allowed 185 feet there for the past 30 years, and nothing's happened. So it's not like if we manually change it to 150 or 125, somebody's gonna be like, I don't want the developer. Cases are, these same buildings are likely to be there 50 years from now.
That's sort of the question first time. 150 now?
Oh my God, no.
What's the roadway width, or the?
Yeah, just distance from Miller and Lumley, in the front, as you said.
The, the, the roadway only on the south foot, on the street.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the width, the width here, the street front is from in between Lumley and Little.
It's 150 feet, 150 feet, that's what I, Orange Arrow's just, 150. So from, yeah, the bottom, between the two roadways of Miller and Lumley is 150 feet.
Northward, this is 75.
Maybe they can take a national bump. Yeah, so you couldn't do a 25. And probably not quite 130.
So we're good with 150, I heard?
No.
1, 2, 3.
Where's Wes?
I heard 3.
I like 150.
Include the 145, 145 to 150.
Um, I, I don't mind the higher width, I'm using tools to drill the process where it can be maximized. I, the only reason I'm hesitant at the front is, I think that little, um, clock tower really, like, creates a cool center of town, and I like it, so that's why I'm still.
Now, you know, if you get rid of the clock tower.
Nobody was really, you had the ability to do it anytime they wanted.
All right, let's put it 125, and yes.
Not, not 725.
These folks are saying 150, I heard at least three, four people say 150.
That's not true.
Excuse me, folks.
We're still recommending.
They're mainly 150, I heard three people over here say 150 is okay with them, I said 150 is okay with me, why would we say now that we're gonna do it 125?
It's a split vote thing, right? You all get to vote, that's right.
Right.
There's no votes.
Okay, guys.
Your votes is split vote right now.
We made a lot of progress.
I rate your vote on zoning ordinance. This is not a vote, this is trying to get.
It is a vote, since we get to the side, so we need to make sure that we all agree.
125, maybe 125.
90, including the drive thru. So, you know, we are, as we talked about, we are in phase four, but this is a number in a box on, on a document. So, if it's okay with everyone, I'm gonna suggest that if you put it 125 feet, and then if we're, when we bring this document back, we'll have a little bit more discussion about this. And I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road, but this seems like it may need a little more conversation, and this is a very, very easy thing to change in the next round.
And again, whether it's 125 or 150, planning commission has the ability to grant waiver, and it's gonna go to support design review. So you have the layers, layers of review for a site-specific design in a site-specific context, that when we have somebody that actually might bring something someday, we'll be able to look at it in more detail, it's not like it's gonna be a thumbs up or thumbs down, go build or whatever you want.
Right. Because that process went from those houses you saw on the old floor to that, it doesn't seem important.
All right. So we're gonna stay on the same side. At the, at the council retreat in June, expansion of Central Business District, Council Center Core Subzoning District, to encompass more of the parcel behind West Banko will discuss. So in the current draft of the zoning map, the core subzoning district is the pink area, um, essentially is the, as I said, the back of the West Banko building, with the remainder of the parcel moving in the supporting subzoning district. And that was done because we are moving more toward residential, and the intensity of development, at, the thought process was, the intensity of development should then respect the fact that we were moving down Melon and Lumley toward a residential area. This is what the side looks like today, in terms of the existing boundaries and the existing structures, um, this is some strange lot lines, um, and we're still trying to figure out what's going on with Hattadorn in terms of the roadway width, but that's what it looks like today. On this side, the core extends to roughly the end of the existing one-story building, which is what y'all discussed at your retreat in June. Again, doing a very rough back of the envelope site plan, assuming the West Banko building is retained, the minimum building widths are not reduced, which we just sort of kinda did, um, two stories are constructed, the clock tower remains, stormwater is provided underground, and parking is provided by a grade as well, this side could potentially have a very large building on it. If you put it into the core, you would essentially be having one building on the side. If you leave it in the supporting, you're going to be having multiple buildings on the side. And that really and truly is the largest difference between having it in the core or in the supporting. So the question to you is, based on the discussions that you had in June, do you want to leave it in the supporting, so that again, as you know, 75 foot building works, 15 feet between buildings, um, multiple buildings on this side, or are you open to having one larger building on the side, given the surrounding context?
Did you say, just for clarity, did you say if it stays in the core, I thought you said if it stays in the core, there could be multiple buildings, even if it's in the supporting, there could be multiple buildings?
Well, you're right.
If it's in the core, it could have one large.
Large, one large building. And so that's the major difference, given the context, do you want to have one larger building, or do you want to, or leave it in the supporting, where you would have multiple areas on the side?
Still, the one larger building would still be, uh, 150 by 100.
So at that point.
Multiple.
So if you put it into the core, you would then now be subject to the building depth requirement of 125 feet, and the core does not permit multiple buildings on the side.
That would be better, for the same name.
Yes. What do you guys think about that?
That would be the floor, you do that.
It would seem like it, what, what did you guys think?
I, personally, it'd need to look the same character as the core or Central Business District. If it was a clean lot, it'd be the same, very, very cross street, it'd be the same.
But just like I said before, that, I mean, even if it's in the core, somebody could put multiple buildings there. If it was larger, they would be smaller.
Well, as, as it's currently drafted, multiple permitted buildings on the side are not permitted in the core, that doesn't mean.
They could split a lot.
They couldn't split a lot.
No. Maybe it should stay in the core, and I assume that the Melon and Lumley sites are not, and not anymore, but they were in the, the houses on Melon and Lumley, both sides that were part of the CBD have been taken out, or are they still?
They are still in the CBD, but they are classified as residential CBD.
Okay.
So they could not have any sort of redevelopment like this on it.
So if I have to get into the core, probably be.
I'm just saying that if you put it into the core, now that you have a, placed a, a depth restriction on it, that does restrict the size of the building, but as Dave said, that doesn't mean someone couldn't then divide the lot and have multiple buildings that way in the core. But as it's currently structured, before we had the building depth, the major difference was going to be one building or multiple buildings.
To the potential, if it, if it was still part of the, um, the supporting, then the building would only be 75 feet wide on that back part.
Correct, and with 15 feet between.
And if it's part of the core, that second building, you do that.
125 feet, what you just said, right.
Supporting, alright.
It's supporting as the map is currently drafted.
And this goes all the way back to Hattadorn, correct?
Because all of that had it, correct, so it's a large site.
What, what question is, Fort Thomas, it has a certain setback from the, from the road, going down Lumley, did it have the same setback off of that sidewalk?
So, the, because it is a situation where it's actually got three roads around it.
Right.
Um, the minimum setback is going to be five feet, and maximum setback would be 20. So you are, so it is not going to be all the way to the lot line in the same sense that it would be on, on Fort Thomas that way.
And then these lot lines, I don't know, are ready to, to, to vote, I mean, I don't know what the.
The lots are, the, the lots are odd, I mean, that's where it currently is. So you have the West Banko, which is the 34, which is that oddly shaped lot, and then you have the building, the lot with, um, the one-story building that has the bodega in it, um, is that odd shaped lot. And where the lot line is in relation to Hattadorn, we're not precisely sure, you think the roadway for Hattadorn is about 4. Right, mark four, yes.
We decide whether or not to put this as part of core or keep it as a, so, I mean, I haven't heard one person, not one person tell me they want 150 foot, 120 by 100. And I think you could sell 100, I haven't heard anybody say that to me ever, except for this group, and a few people here, I haven't heard one resident come up to me saying he is a very large wide building, 100 for a lot of two stories.
I, I, I'm gonna say that it's, as you're moving, as you're moving towards, you know, the homes on Melon and Lumley, a large building on the site would be incongruous, I think.
If, 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 two, if you were saying, yeah, if there's two of those, that would be okay.
But if you leave it in the supporting, then it is, at least buildings that are 75 feet wide with 15 feet between them.
Which is dramatically different, too.
Which is very dramatically different than what you currently have.
I mean, if that building, again, if we're back, if that building burned down, they could rebuild it.
Oh my God. Well, they could rebuild it.
Well, because it's not conform, but not, not, but not, would not be conforming structure, they could rebuild it.
Most buildings in the avenue line in the CBD not having direct impact on the single family, this building does, and I would think it'd be good to have some kind of transitional, lower density kind of zone there to act as a buffer between the single family, and if they, if making that part of that subzone would do that.
So what I'm hearing then is, leave the map as it's currently shown.
Right.
So this is, I mean, so it's two-story.
Yeah, 101, that's where we're here. Do you have to understand why the things that are residential in Japan's supporting, I don't understand why, why would, why would business owners make it R1C1 or whatever?
It's commercial now, that's what.
Those one, the, the.
Oh, you mean the two houses?
Yeah, the houses that are behind it, you know, that, those are your actual homes, like lot 14 and 15 off Lumley are homes, not residential.
So, uh, literally almost a year ago, we met with a council and discussed whether or not to pull, leave those in the Central Business District as a subzoning district, or to put them in R1C, which is what the rest of those are. Um, the council discussion was in understanding that, a couple of things, one, today there's own Central Business District, so if you change the new residential, and I wish the investment back expectations, that would be impacted.
Okay.
But what we, what we did do is create this residential subzoning district, so that they become conforming uses, which they aren't today.
Yes.
So we did, we split the baby in that situation.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Now, during the coffee conversation last month, we're still in the same spot, um, community members expressed concerns about a mixed-use building being on this site, um, and asked that I bring it before you. Some of the community members said, mixed-use, meaning being non-residential on the first floor and residential above. So my question to you is, are you comfortable with having a mixed-use building on this side, and in the supporting it would be permitted, uh, mixed-use buildings? Or do you in some way want to preclude a mixed-use building?
Very mixed-use buildings in the fourth one is positive.
No.
He goes to this, but, he's not gonna be, be similar.
So if you, well, go ahead, I mean, do you want to allow mixed-use here or not?
So we could just restrict it to no residential ones here.
You could, but we're gonna have to do some additional complexities to the zoning to do that, but I felt like with, given the, the level of concerns that was expressed in copies and conversations about a mixed-use building being on the side, that I needed to bring it before you.
It seems like if we're concerned about density, this would be one area where you could give, give a thought about.
Of course, at one point, you know, there's been this advocacy for the historic district of Fort Thomas, and the historic history of Fort Thomas is based on, really, the 1920s construction that was in the photograph that Kevin shared, which was mixed-use residential.
That's not true.
And so, this was demolished in the late 1950s, early 1960s, those residences were, to build this commercial, highly commercial zone, that's what this was initially.
Yeah, the 20s population compared to now.
That was when we were about 10,000.
Right. Well, I'm just, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about, just not, not part of the architecture.
I'd say.
From the character of the community, which is what everybody's concerned about somewhat, is the character of the community.
I think it's character and density.
I think commercial only gets fit there for, in my.
70 years.
You know, why not just keep it commercial, you know, like, if we want, we need living above it, I think, to support the idea that you bring people into the Central Business District, this would, this would, this would, all over the suburbs in the Central Business District, it'll, it'll go away. That's what my island is, live above the residential. I think that's what we need to do there.
Mike, can I, listen, Elisa?
Yes.
I will, I will say, um, for other communities. I will, I will say, for other communities, what have you seen where you have basically facilities, I mean, residential on three sides of a, of a, I guess, a commercial lot or a, you know, this type of lot? What do other folks do? To me, what I was thinking is when you said, do you want a mixed use or not? I was thinking mixed use seems to make the most sense because it's, it's kind of like a buffer. People live there and also live next door. So there's kind of a, you know, there's a balance there. And then striking a balance, plus, like you just suggested, adding what it was historically. So I liked it because there was a, it seemed to be a balance. And what would other communities do in that situation?
So many communities would be concerned that if you, for example, tore down this one story building and put two story office building in, that that would be then infringing more intensely on residential uses by having two stories of houses looking down on you. And they would prefer, many communities would prefer to have that mixed use so that you had a balance of residential and non-residential adjacent to the homes. But as I said, at the coffee and conversation, there were community members who were concerned about having residential in this lot. So, but yes.
I think when you talk about having multiple, and residents, most of the places that also had it here, you had 107. Maybe the density doesn't affect the whole system a lot, but I believe it will. And also flexible checkage from the whole town. We already have, you know, there's already getting back up. There are school times, delivery's come out there, they're blocking one side of the road when they're, when they're running one highway to the other place. Beer trucks now and alcohol trucks are pulling around these things, pouring the back blocks. Landseating vehicles then come around. So if you just add so much more intensity, adding people is not an answer to this. So we don't have the infrastructure, I don't think that we're built off to handle that many more residents. That's just not how we're built, not through the city.
I mean, there was a lot more traffic there when that broke, considering there is today.
And I would say that typically, office uses are going to generate more traffic at peak times, such as when your school is trying to fit in, than you would have residential. I'm not going to anyway.
Any office and residential, too.
But no, I'm saying if you put, if someone tore this down, if you do a two story office building in, you would actually, you'd have more traffic at peak times, such as when your school was scattered, than you would if you had a mix of office and residential. But I'm not going to state that, we just, that's generally the way it works.
I think, well, honestly, for me, seeing that as a mixed use, kind of like the one islands, maybe, not that necessarily deal, maybe a little bit different, but, you know, having that opportunity would, would do, like we talked about, bring some density to the core, help support our businesses currently.
No.
Because they can walk to where they get to, get their, you know, get a meal or go to Subway or go to, to go to these places. And it helps support that. I do, Adam, I do, I do agree, we don't, we don't want to get too big for our britches and get too, too large in the community. But I think if you were going to have one place where you had some density and you had like 30 more homes, that would probably be the one place in this community that I would do that. I wouldn't go and build that subdivision that just got built. I'd rather have it right there, quite honestly. Because I think it would add, it would add more value to your downtown.
And I would point out that, you know, when we had these discussions at the coffee and conversation last week, I apologize to you, we didn't have restrictions that were just always, always said, which is one to one ratios, more than 5,500 square feet goes to the B and A. And we already placed additional restrictions tonight that weren't there a month ago.
So just for the number of units that, if you did do a mixed use building there, 125 feet wide by that lot, 120, or back to that unit zone, it's 125, right?
That's a lot of law.
But.
It is.
14 feet to the 120, so if you have.
Is it 65% of that?
That's without like common space or holidays or like.
In that, it's for.
And you have to park in front of the tenant either. And keep it, again, because you made the conditional use, this will go in far as the B and A. And they can really start to look at how all of this is constructed.
65% section, too?
Uh, it would be actually part of the 65% section because this isn't supporting, because you just made that decision. So it just really wouldn't be as intense as, as we were thinking that one. Because we've added all of those restrictions just since we started a couple hours ago.
Are they talking about.
Four, four.
He has two doors.
I don't think that. I think it's better to, I think just keep the property better because you basically wouldn't have a full convenience floor you could drive to anymore.
But we can't control use, that could go away tomorrow. It could become, you know, anything tomorrow.
And then when you're walking out for conversation, would you rather have a storefront or a building? Would you rather drive? I mean, you have that pedestrian bicycle concept with people pulling in and out there.
If you make it commercial, you kind of force that to be something. If you allow residential, it is only a mixed use, there will not be a store there like that.
And we have a usage of 65%.
The block coverage. We'll get five buildings.
Should I be 75 feet wide?
Change, any redone, you're ripping up.
That's what we're talking about.
You're ripping up parking lot. You have to.
See, it's, you're in the supporting, so the building's maximum 75 feet wide, 15 feet between.
Oh, you mean in the supporting hand, residential?
Correct.
I mean, this is supporting.
This is supporting, you just made that decision.
They talk about being in the core.
You have no idea, they just made that decision.
You keep it supporting, so all the stairs that we've already talked about. I think you have placed enough restrictions on your mixed use that you're going to be okay. Now that you left it in the supporting.
Lot restriction on it. I don't think, I don't think the thought of more residential above it at all. You know what I mean?
You make a good point. I don't mind. It is a transition to an outdoor area. If I don't want transition, it's. Thinking about that more.
I mean, if you have residential above, you're less likely to have, you know, an offensive use below because obviously you couldn't sell the apartments up above because nobody wants to live above a vape shop or a lounge bar or whatever the case would be. You know, you need some compatibility between the residential and the commercial. So that does help to mitigate potentially that kind of scenario. Whatever, if you like to make friends, but anyway, I'm just saying.
I think, I know it sounds bad, but I do feel like it is a kind of better transition to a neighborhood than having a, you're not going to get a ton of apartments or anything back there based off the restrictions we have. It's a good transition to that area.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with that. There's a similar vape shop there right now, by the way, but.
There's a partner of it then. There's probably none of those vape shops. You're barely doing one there.
Vape shop, you know, it's disgusting. All right, we're going to prevent mixed uses at 42 Melva Lane. New and on.
I was thinking that that was, all of the supporting thing, no?
Yes, it has the same standards.
All the restrictions we put on before have applied to now, right? If you need it supported.
Correct. All right. At this point, we will move on to potentially permitting then breakfast establishments in the towns that are supporting the subzoning district. So just to remind you where this supporting subzoning district is, is the light orange area, which includes the single family detached dwellings, just north of the Sonic Lodge. Some of which are used for businesses today, the bank and the post office south of the theater, as well as the city building. And the building, the lot we were just talking about.
Do a lot of this already have the option required for air babies or maybe not.
So we're not talking about air babies, we're talking about bed and breakfasts. And yes, many of those houses already have parking behind them. Oops. So that one. You don't allow bed and breakfasts anywhere.
We would want to build five houses.
So the issue of permitting bed and breakfast establishments in the supporting subzoning district came about because of the desire to have these residential buildings remain. As a way to then allow another viable use for those buildings because of the, of how valued they are within the community. At the retreat, the council asked me to bring back some draft regulations for bed and breakfast establishments, which I will repeat over the next few slides. So just going to lump these really quickly, they were in the packet that you received. The building utilized for bed and breakfast must have originally been designed as a single family detached dwelling. The facility must be operated and managed by the owner or the leaseholder who must reside on site in order to accommodate the bed and breakfast. It has to maintain the appearance of the single family residence. The health department has to approve the kitchen facilities. And food service shall only be permitted for residents only. I point out that this restriction may be unnecessary since restaurants are permitted in the CBD. But if you want to limit the intensity of the bed and breakfast, this could be retained. No more than 12 guest sleeping rooms should be unified for the bed and breakfast based on the capacity set by the fire marshal. Again, this number can be adjusted by the planning commission of the council as you see fit. There would be no cooking in the rooms other than microwaves, trash recycling centers behind the building. Parking for guests and employees has to be provided on site. All the guest rooms would have to be in the principal structure, no separate structures. Accessory structures would be allowed to have guest rooms. And then the occupational license would be required and occupational taxes would have to be paid to the city. So what do you think? Should we allow bed and breakfasts based on those types of restrictions?
Could you repeat what you said before about adding value to the homes or what would you call it?
No, just adding a use to them, right? Because the idea that, because right now, they're all non-conforming, the ones that are being used as a single family. The ones that, many of them have offices on the first floor and residential above. And the community members have expressed that they really want these structures to remain, but they don't want them to be torn down. And so the idea being that if we add another use that could potentially make these existing structures viable, such as a bed and breakfast, is that a good idea?
And just to point clarity, we've talked about this over the last several months. Those could, the buildings that are currently converted on the first floor residential on the second could be brought back to single family homes.
Under the UDOs, it's currently drafted, all of those could be converted back to single family detached dwellings. So this is not preventing that, this is just adding another option for these. And we got talked about their retreat, we're like, well, it might be a good idea, but we want to see some, some regulations, some restrictions. So that's where those came from.
I don't see insurance.
Just planning, shit, for the floor, the floor we're at. So bedroom room, up to those three, four, three, four. So the resident, he would be in.
Three, four, but if without the first floor, it would be a murder.
The only comment I'd make, the building code actually addresses bed and breakfast as a separate residential use. So changing one would be a change in use and not the fire marshal, but the building department would have jurisdiction over that.
Office, right.
It mentioned the fire marshal applies in there.
Office.
Then it should be a building department.
And are we permitting this? I was trying to work on here. We're permitting the short term rentals in the CBD as well?
Yes.
I mean, I think if you're allowing the short term rentals, I don't see how you would not allow them. Shortly, as an Airbnb use.
I would eliminate.
So if I remember correctly, the Airbnb's are permitted in the central business district. And they are not permitted, for example, they're prohibited in the R3s, the R5s, the Alexandria Pike mixed use district, different commercial districts. Central business district, yeah. And the traditional business district, which is where the market is.
If we had a request by anybody to do this, I would.
No.
I just don't think it hurts.
I think, I think anybody's going to want to tell you true.
Can't imagine, I can't imagine it being very successful.
Well, it gives people. Take a roll. No, that's just. Well, just give you a lot of those, could you, would you do the same, the smaller ones on Lumley and Hill? I can say this, right, because they're, they're in, like, they're central business.
I, I don't, I don't. I, I don't think it would be appropriate to allow bed and breakfast on Melva and Lumley because of residential nature. This is a commercial street.
Yep, no problem.
So do you want to do it? And if so, are those restrictions appropriate? All right. So I want to discuss the, the, the retreat, and just briefly start discussing. The draft video classifies single family detached dwellings as a restricted use in the towns that are supporting the subzoning district. With the restriction that single family detached dwellings must exist at the time the UDO is adopted, this restriction precludes the construction of new single family detached dwellings in this subzoning district in locations where they don't exist today. But the restriction does legitimize the existing structures being used as single family and permits the conversion back to homes if the property owners wish to do so, as Ben just asked. At the retreat, we discussed permitting single family detached dwellings by right in the supporting subzoning district, but doing so did not seem like something the council wished to do. At the coffee conversation last month, several community members asked if this issue be revisited, specifically whether we would want to permit single family detached dwellings by right, which would mean that new homes could be permitted and built in the supporting subzoning districts where they don't currently exist today, such as where the Fifth Third Bank is, where Guardian Bank is, where the US Bank is. So the question before you is, should single family detached dwellings be permitted by right in the supporting subzoning district?
Not because, if I remember, because like if you took the third, you could make it like a street and put a bunch of. Is that where this is coming from?
So it's coming from just community members wanting the idea that potentially those, particularly those three banks could be torn down and made into homes. And as the zoning ordinance is currently constructed, that, excuse me, the UDO is currently drafted, that would not be the case. When we had the discussion back in June, you know, we talked about the fact that this is a central business district. And given that, should there be an option for single family detached dwellings, given the fact that it is a central business district? That was the discussion we had that in. But again, community members have asked us to be revisited.
All those, all those banks are in the supporting.
They are all in the supporting subzoning district. The largest lot, obviously being the Fifth Third side that we discussed.
If you're going to do it, do a conditional, do a.
The conditional, they still could.
Yeah, they have some to work just with their plans.
Okay, but there's still a way.
Unless you all, and this is where I get a little confused about the jurisdictions and the adjustment. If it's by right, it still would have something to do with plans or not.
No.
There might be a development plan, but we don't, we, it wouldn't be a zone change. We wouldn't have to prove anything apart from the use.
And if it did, your houses, individual lots sold off, you wouldn't see it at all.
Well, let's make a step back. If they would say subdivision, they would see the creation of a lot.
Right.
But they would not see anything else because single family detached dwellings do not require review by the planning commission. It would simply just go to the zoning administrator. So.
So we built a house.
So we built a, so for example, they took the Fifth Third Bank or Guardian Bank, they divided it in three lots, the planning commission would approve subdivision of those two lots. But then no one other than the design review board, don't ever forget that. They would have to inform the design review board.
Sure, sure.
Would then approve what those homes look like.
But if it's conditionally used, they're still going to have to go with subdivision plan.
They would have to.
And they have to go, so they have to replace it.
They would have to go with replacements. They would have to go to the planning commission, the subdivision.
So if the interest is controlled, then I'd say make it conditional.
Um, right.
Can I ask a question? Why are we still? Five minutes ago, we were just saying we didn't want mixed use because we might get 10 extra units of homes above that one area, the sandwich shop or whatever it's called, or convenient. But these are five homes or five buildings that were used to be homes that are commercial and have commercial entities at the bottom. And I believe there's people living upstairs. Why would we want to build more homes in this area? Well, I don't think it's going to look right. You know what I mean? If we try to, I mean, it'll, it'll look like homes in here. But if you, at the bank, that, the Fifth Third might make sense because they're homes, homes, homes. But then when I get down to the post office and next to the, next to the theater, I guess I'd call it, it wouldn't make any sense. It would, it would look out of place and it would look like our, our community was kind of not thought out well. This year, these, right now, currently look like, yeah, our community's grown up over time. And, and that's what happens a lot of older, older cities is where the, you know, the central business, the old homes get turned into, you know, businesses and commercial operations. And after some point in time, they, those go away and new buildings come up. But I'm not, I don't, I don't see why this makes sense to allow a single family detached dwellings in those, those properties in the future. It wouldn't make sense. We've already said we're not, we're worried about density.
And build it back up or do you convert it back into single families?
So we have, that's two different issues, right? Those buildings right there, you know, could be converted to single family homes. Those buildings right there, you know, could be converted to single-family homes. The issue is allowing new single families in places where they don't exist today, and it happens to just be the three banks, essentially, Fifth Third, Guardian, and US Bank. And I think what Dave's saying is while it may make sense, for example, to allow it, the third thing is, it would be in the rules, in his opinion, to say have the theater building and then five houses and then the post office, for example. But again, there are community members who said that that's precisely what they would like, is for all of those banks to be moved down and homes put there.
But if you made it conditional, then you could deny that?
No.
No, so to allow.
You would still have to allow it unless there was some really large reason not to do so. Say, a large reason not to do so, for example, would be at, I'm not going to say this is what's happening, but this would be an example. So before the US Bank was there, it was a gas station, and it was all contaminated. That would be a reason for the pure way to say, no, you can't have us necessarily, but you could potentially have it in the Third Bank. There would have to be some major reason not to allow it.
Could we allow it, the Third location would not be the other, not the US Bank?
It would be very, very difficult at this point to keep carving out subzoning districts. No way to do that.
It's not a good plan. For the single-family home, it's just not a good plan. For the single-family home, you build a, that's easy.
Exactly.
If there's a reason why you want to do that, that's fine, but I don't see anyone buying a bank building and letting people live next to commercial buildings.
I don't, I don't make either, I don't make the policy, but I always think it up, it looks, because there's single-family homes over there now, if the bank wasn't there, there would just be the contingents to build.
That side is unique, or it's different than the other. You gotta remember that.
I don't see it working there, I can't see it working.
For the Fifth Third Lot, for the Fifth Third Lot, it's unlikely somebody would build a house or two houses, somebody would probably put a street there across from the city building and develop that whole two acres.
And that's one in line with what would happen.
Relatively, well, that would look like how many houses? With, with proper restrictions on lot size, I'd say, what would that look like? What, how many houses could be there?
Well, half of it's R1C, and so you could put a street down to all those R1Cs, what is that, an eight thousand square foot? Five thousand square foot lot?
Hobbies.
You could put in retaining walls if you wanted enough houses in there, that's what I'm saying. From an engineering standpoint, it's not that difficult.
But we still have, I mean, that would, that would kick in all the long-term projects we have to build in this.
I, well, actually, that's not in the, I'm not saying we want it, I'm just saying that it would happen.
But if you just say you can't do it in there.
That's, that's not good.
If you say you can't do it, then you're moving to, you're basically building, building.
Somebody doesn't have to build it.
But again, we just, we've already lived in building depth.
Yeah.
And, but Dave's correct, in that particular lot, you're probably going to get a street and homes, but it's on that street that are perpendicular to Fort Thomas Avenue.
But if we leave it the way it is written right now?
Correct. If you leave it the way it's written right now, those banks cannot be converted into single-family, new single-family detached dwellings.
I realize this may not be economically, you probably don't get two houses there, like where you ended drawing where there was two plots on the Fifth Third Lot, but if you, couldn't be limited to where you can't do the development, but it could be, you know, not multi-site, but I guess it would be multi-site, you have two homes, but you said there's only two homes at Facy Avenue, or something to that effect, you know, I don't know. So you, you could put two homes there, but not develop 10, 12 sites.
No, you can't, because you, a piece of property has to have zoning on it that permits it to do something. So we can't just say, you know, and develop the frontage of it, back of it is zone, R1C, and they could put single-family detached dwelling units there if I can find a way to get there from Fort Thomas Avenue.
Kind of like they did on, or, I don't, there's like Home Salon, you know?
Right.
Okay. Like a shared driveway or something like.
True, this is a hard discussion. I might hear somebody, I hear somebody say, well, you can put these things up there, the odds would not be hungry, like, right? So the odds of staying building a home in areas aren't very likely, right? Because of what the area is.
I, I, you've never heard me say that.
No, that seems to be the, that's a tall lie.
But my point is this, I mean, overall, from a conceptual standard, your vision for the central business district and the supporting subzoning district, what do you want to see new single-family detached dwellings? That's the big picture question.
I'm feeling a leaning forward with the way that it's written, that detects that, yeah, we can't keep carving out, there's only so much we can do anyway, and so if we kind of max out.
And if the Third decides they want to sell.
No, no, we're not.
Or they want to redevelop, and they decide to look at it, and they figure out a way they can put a bunch of houses back down there, they'll come to us and ask for a variance or a zone change or whatever to make that happen.
Well, you can't ask for variance, because we may use variance, but they could ask for zones, some change, and ask for that portion of some of the central business district supporting, for the R1C.
Or they could just tear down their building.
Put a street in and not build anything.
And not do anything at the top of it, but at the bottom of it, they can put in houses.
That's, that's exactly true as well.
Yeah.
In which case, you have nothing fronting on Fort Thomas Avenue.
But then the design review board would say, you have quite a market, and both sides can grow, you could do something to.
No.
No, they don't.
They don't. They have no control over it, all, all of the design review board can do would be to okay, similar issues with other, other banks.
Oh, well, we need another group. We're charging more people than in the past. We are. With, with that explanation, I, I think that I'm good leading it, as is, because I, I kind of like the idea of having houses over there, but certainly not with your bank and guardian agencies, but if, if there's an option for rezoning for that particular area, I'm good leading it.
I'm just thinking density too, looking, DC4, whatever it is, there's not a ton of houses back there, but everyone I know living in there is three or five kids. So you get six houses back there, you could get twenty kids at, whatever, wire Johnson, whatever it is.
So if all of the houses are called the street, can we rebuild the thing, single-family house?
Yes.
I, I think, and they're allowed to already.
Under the draft, not today, but under the draft.
Yes. So keeping those homes as they are, I have no problem, like, I guess it's the way you have a draft, or where you can't put, unless you're going to make a conditional plan, I think every time, I think if you cut it off, especially.
I can't take it anymore.
You know, new homes wouldn't sit there, they would be empty space. Probably the same thing with, but I like the fact that we allowing our regions.
If they want.
We can't make it look like this, if we can't restrict it to this, then I don't want to risk one day setting it up.
All right, so we will reduce single-family detached dwellings as restricted use in the supporting subzoning district. Okay, so it is 10 till 9, and we have completed Town Center, unless you have any other questions.
We got to discuss, um, when we talked about this, I'm the, how they ban all existing two families or apartments and, and.
We are not, because I thought it was a settled issue, that you could add square footage to do questions.
No, no, I like, I do, I like it, and I just thought it might be prudent to discuss it, I know we've partnered with a few of all these streets that people restricted it if they have, they have required all-street parking, because of the places that they have.
They can't, they can't add units.
But they can add a bed.
But again, we're not, if it's a two-family dwelling, they have a parking requirement that they have to meet.
All right, I just want to make sure that was in there. I had to talk about that later, you know what I mean, like, just making sure that, because I know that a lot of these places, like on Longley or Miller and stuff like that, there's already problems with all-street parking.
So here's my question, it's 10 till 9, do we want to start through Midway, or what do we want to do?
Yes, because I'm going to finish this tonight.
All right, here we go. All right, the questions to consider in the Midway area include, but committed maximum height, including limiting the, the number of stories in the core subzoning districts in the Midway, the maximum building width in the Core One and Core Two subzoning districts, and then the permitted uses, specifically multifamily uses in Core Two Subzoning.
Okay, what we just did for Town Center, can we do for that? We just went through a lot of stuff. Well, that same is work for Midway.
Well, the only thing that I would say is that we are, we do have existing three-story buildings in Midway.
Okay, so we just, let, let's look at what's different instead of going through everything.
I agree. All right, so there are five subzoning districts in Midway, three core and two residential. The core subzoning district is different in permitted uses and development standards, and the residential subzoning districts differ by permitted uses with more intense non-residential uses permitted in residential. The Core One is the aqua color with the rust color being Core Two, and Core Three is the Cincinnati Bell building, which is olive green.
So the only issue difference between what we just talked about is this three-story building.
Right. The first issue to consider is the maximum permitted height, including limiting the number of stories in the zoning districts. Right now, the Core Three, and as I said, Cincinnati Bell building, and we have reduced the height there to 40 feet, and have no limitation on stories.
And that's because the Cincinnati Bell was 40 feet tall?
Uh, no, um, yeah, it was, it is actually, this was a decision that the planning commission made during Phase Three, to reduce the height to 40 feet, which makes this building non-conforming. So like in the Town Center, there have been some discussions about limiting the number of stories in addition to the maximum permitted height, which is 40 feet in all of the core subzoning districts. Certainly, we could impose the same story limitations that you decided to use in Town Center, which is two stories for a flat roof and two and a half for a slope. But for context, you do have two three-story buildings in Midway, such as the ones on the screen, and as we previously discussed, the Kaufman Building, it's two and a half stories.
How tall is the building in Midway?
So, the height of the building occupies all the old pub, is approximately 42 feet in height, and the building with the turret is about 40 feet tall, with about 55 feet tall at the top of the tower. In the draft, based for draft of UDO, the height limitations do not apply to church spires, gophers, kublas, and domes, so that dome is fine. But again, if you're dealing with a situation where at least one of those buildings has become non-conforming as a result, how do we do the height to 40?
I think it'd be amazing if someone built similar buildings right next to it, and I know it's looking like that, that'd be amazing for them.
Didn't we talk about allowing three-story all the way down to the back there?
So, during the discussion by the City Council in early June, it was suggested that perhaps the maximum height should be increased from the south side of Midway Court to the south side of Best Mariner Valley. So that's the orange line that you see on the screen. So are you comfortable with that?
I think it would be equal.
We talked about, we're just trying to pull it together.
So, what would be, said it would be a height limit of 45 feet with three stories, where you see that orange line. Everybody okay with that?
Does that have more density in residence though?
No, it's this.
Well, I mean, those two buildings that have, there are three stories, already have residential on the second, third floors.
Two, not the rest of them.
No.
Okay, a lot of more density.
Yep, fine. But it's, it's the same kind of one-to-one?
Well, again, we could do that, and that's the next slide, but by doing so, you are then going to make those two three-story buildings non-conforming uses, because they already have residential on two floors.
Hey, look, you have the three-story building, it's gotta be two-to-one.
I would agree.
Yeah.
All right, so what I'm hearing is where we see that orange line, three-story buildings, 45 feet, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
What are you recording?
Okay. So what we could do then.
Thank you.
So what we can do is what we've already talked about.
We're all political, but I don't know if you, you know, earlier Mayor Hoff said, let's do whatever I want, so I'm not trying to do what they want, I'm trying to listen to these people and do what the rest is watching.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't see why they hold a 40 feet tall, I haven't heard anybody say anything different.
Thank you.
I always tend to agree with what they want, but I do represent them, so.
All right, so let's do this.
We all came here for a reason, we all moved here for a reason. Thank you.
All right, now, what we can do is make the ratio of those three-story buildings two-to-one. Does that work?
The three-story building is bad.
Yes. If it's a two-story building, it's one-to-one. Okay, does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to classify buildings over 5,500 square feet as a condition use?
I'm sure there is.
Okay. Do we want to restrict the building depth to 125 feet, just for dead in Town Center?
Oh, really?
I feel like.
So, um.
Yes.
Okay. Done.
Can we add a square footage?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes. So for the square feet, it's pretty low. And that's close, right, David?
Yeah.
All right, maximum building width, same issue that we had in the Town Center. So for the Core One and Two is currently 150 feet, other than the draft. Again, the core is the aqua color, and the rust is the Core Two.
It leads to the, the building.
I continue with the building.
You went like continuous with, like, like from Midway Court down to Best, or like Best is along South Fort Thomas, Best is about 70 feet.
Yeah.
The, the auto building?
What we could do is tailor building width by subzoning district, so for example, in the Core One, we can restrict the building width to 75 feet, and in the Core Two, make a maximum building width of 125 feet like we did in Town Center. Does that make sense?
Yep. Yeah. Seventy-four.
So for the Core One, which is the aqua area, make the maximum building width 75 feet, but in the Core Two, which is the rust, put it at 125 feet.
Which is, what do we have here? Was it the CDM C2, is that what you're looking at here?
Yeah, the rust area.
Which is, what is, what is the C2, reservoir?
That's the reservoir, I'll show you the buildings if you want.
That's, that's the, that, south side of that. So you, what would, what could potentially be in south side? That's a big, that's a big block.
And that would be, that would be a maximum width, about, a maximum building width of 125 feet, as opposed to 150, which is what is currently drafted today.
What's the stories and residential?
So we haven't talked about uses yet, but we're going to get there, right now we're just doing maximum building width. Do you want to impose 125 feet here?
What's the lift now? 75 in one and 125 in the other?
Correct. So what I'm suggesting is you tailor maximum building width by subzoning district, and in the core, 75, Core One, and Core Two, which is the area that you see here, where Snatties and all of that.
What is the width of Best?
Best is about 75 feet.
Is it?
At the core, at the street frontage.
Well, the one thing you got to do with them is the other side, pretty open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So different in central business, so called street. Looks, vision-wise, it's going to look different.
Actually, I don't know what it's going to be, so we can drive.
It'll be 125 feet as well.
What is it currently?
Currently drafted as 150.
We've been discussing such uses, such uses to eat side to side, and all that, uses, and all those hand-to-hand, not continuous. You can't turn the alley, but you can.
No. So you cannot have a building that is, that would stretch from one side to the other because of the alley.
That's really true.
That's really interesting.
Doctor's stories law is about 150.
Is that the gray building?
No. Would we be enough for 65% of all of these buildings?
We haven't gotten it yet.
The gray building is... But the building is off 150.
So as I said, my suggestion is that you... The core... One, which is the aqua, would be 75 and the rust would be 125. In terms of...
Before I decide, I need to know what the restrictions are on it.
Well, right now, we have just, you had just said that you wanted to put a maximum building depth of 125 feet. So that's a restriction that you do currently have. And you classify all buildings over 5,500 square feet as a conditional use. So those restrictions do not, are not in the current U D O, but they are the ones that you just agreed to.
I'd like the 65% over here. Maybe that's why we're doing here.
That, so you're talking about from the Core 2?
Yeah, Amerisop is and the rest of them. I'm just curious, think about the Best building under that circumstance. If the Best building would not even come near existing on that lot, 65%.
But he's talking about the Core 2, which is...
Oh, Best is Core 1 still, sorry. But at the end of the aqua area, would...
Yeah, Best would be in the aqua.
The doctor's position building in the corner area, that would call 125. No? Yeah.
So we're talking about 65% by building, by building, not by any new service. And again, I've talked about hours and spellings now.
As long as it's not dramatically changing what's currently there, I'd be okay with it maybe 65%. I just don't want it dramatically to change what's there.
Alright, maximum building width. Core, 75 feet, Core 1, Core 2, 125 feet in the Core 2. Maximum lot coverage by building, 65%. How's that?
So you said Core 1, 75?
Is the maximum building width?
And the core two?
In Core 2, it'd be 125.
125.
Which is what you have in Town Center.
65%.
65?
Yeah.
So those are two-story structures, then we can do one-to-one initially. With the initial, yeah, which is the minimum square footage.
That we've already discussed. Alright.
I was trying to remember, on Midway Court, did we change that to residential or is that still the CBD?
It's still the CBD, but it's residential. One of the subzoning districts. It is...
Except that parcel.
Except the parcel at the very end, which is still R1A.
Yeah, that's what I was getting confused about with the back there.
Yeah, so the parcel at the back is R1A still. And then the rest of the future, future is the Midway Residential 1, which is the same as the shotgun houses. Alright. The final issue to discuss in the Midway area is permitted uses, specifically multifamily uses in the Core 2 Subzoning District. So right now, you are allowed to have multifamily uses in the Core 2 and the Core 3. Core 2 is the area we were just talking about where Amerisop is and all of that. Core 3 is the Cincinnati Bell building. So, at the council retreat, the council considered limiting multifamily dwellings to only a portion of the Midway 2 Subzoning District as shown by the purple line on the screen. That was what you discussed. There is one multifamily building in the Core 2 Subzoning District, which is located at 11 River Road. And that exists today. If the planning commission and the city council wish to limit multifamily buildings in the Core 2, as we just showed by the purple, we could put 1133 into 1177 into the Core 1. We could classify multifamily dwellings as a conditional use. There are any number of ways to spin this cat.
What is your recommendation?
I think we make it a conditional use.
And that would help protect, so if it's selling or like they're not living there.
So right now, multifamily is not permitted in this location.
But with that...
But with making it a conditional use...
If it burned down, they could rebuild it though.
If it, yes, it certainly gets burned down. And it does exist today, which is not, so it's not a non-conforming use. If it was a conditional use and they built it, if someone wanted to build it, that would be the extra level of sweeping that would be there. So first question, do you want to permit multifamily where that purple line is, yes or no? And exclude it everywhere else?
Can you say multifamily, you're only talking about this 1240?
And Hofstra.
And 1247?
And 1201.
Well, that's good.
That would be a...
Not including that.
Correct. It'd just be what fronts on... South Port Thomas Avenue.
What do you mean by multifamily apartment buildings?
Correct.
Where you can have residential on the first floor.
Where you can have residential on the first floor. So we talked about this at the retreat, and the idea being that you were talking about in the Core 2 that you did not want multifamily in all of the Core 2. But perhaps it was okay in these two locations. So the question is, A, do you want to allow it at all? And B, do you want to allow it where the purple line is?
I don't know. If we were gonna allow, what would we allow residential for, different than what we have commercial, you know, now? Actually, something on the second.
So right now, you have an enormous amount of non-residential zoned land. And in fact, you have more than you actually can support. So the idea being that you could potentially have another use on this site, given the fact that it cannot, probably won't redevelop as a purely non-residential use, given the amount of non-residential land you have zoned in the city.
Multifamily is usually used as a buffer between single-family and, you know, commercial district. So that seems to make sense to do that.
I would agree with you that that would make sense right here. Can we still use the square footage restriction?
I would make it a conditional use and do that.
Well, if you use the restriction of square footage, you're only talking about a couple units. And I think the point about the, being able to support, you don't need to make it commercial every, like, right there because you need to be able to support a commercial of, you know, 100 feet left. I agree with that. Did you say that? One of our perfect phrases when we were discussing. Let's have Rob, you gotta support your business.
So we're talking about 127, which is the Dennis Lottery? How you running the rest here? And what's the other one?
1201, which is...
That was all Vince was on the quarter.
Yeah.
That's just right here, right?
I agree.
Yeah, using it.
Oh, well, right now, multifamily is permitted in the Core 3.
Yeah, all right down there.
It is. That would not seem to be as much of a concern as here. So let's table that for a second. And talk about right there. So, what I'm hearing is multifamily is a conditional use where that purple line is shown and 1,200 square feet of per dwelling unit. The size of the dwelling unit, not the density.
They're two-story.
And you want it to be two-story? Okay. It's, that's how it's written? Okay. Alright, two-story, 1,200 square feet.
Doesn't have a square footage restriction?
It does.
Okay.
All new, it's a lot. Is it a structure that...
Alright, so now, in the Core 2, do we want to have a lot coverage of 65%? I believe that's what I heard a moment ago. Is that, that's what I've written down. You want a maximum lot coverage by building, 65% in the Core 2.
Does that make sense in Core 2?
Well, it depends on what you think about making sense, right? I mean, it's going to restrict what you could do on those lots. But that seems to be what you want to do.
Like, I'm thinking like Amerisop, that's a pretty shallow apartment area.
That's not what we're talking about though.
Well, just on, or, okay, the Dallas. Because it's, the direct, it has limitations, it's the parking as well.
No, it's just a building, just a building.
Just the buildings.
And again, these are not, because that alleyway runs between 1201 and 1227, you can't develop all of that as one continuous development. So you're going to be restricted by the amount of parking you're gonna be able to put on the lot anyway. And those are not large lots.
Is that alley used?
Yes.
It's the houses.
So between, you know, having a minimum square footage for each of the apartments and the parking requirements, and the fact that you can only cover 65% of the building with, 65% of the lot with building, you are, your building envelope is this day.
I think some of the parking behind those houses uses that alley.
I would...
About two-thirds of them might be used. To me, it seems like if we've decided on allowing multifamily on those three spots, and we have all these other safe areas in place, specifically the 65%, I don't know how to scale this is, but you wouldn't be able to... If we're talking about wanting to keep everything similar in appearance to what it is today, not have any monstrosities, you wouldn't be able to own any of these spots. Right now, of course. Realistically speaking, I mean, none of these three buildings probably take up 65% of that lot. There'd be a couple of them pretty close. And so it wouldn't be a dramatic difference from today. As far as footprint, I mean.
No, they're just, it's all things of apartment building at this point.
If it has the parking. Alright. Let's move on. Anything else on Midway? Oh, there was one other question. Andy, you questioned allowing multifamily in the Core 3, which is Cincinnati Bell building.
Yeah.
It's currently drafted to allow multifamily in the Core 3. Do you want to continue to do so?
It's a lot something here.
Oh, it's, it's large.
But you have to support something. So it's 2.8 acres.
2.8 acres. For Cincinnati Bell building.
Yeah, that's true.
What is the zone today?
R3.
Is that what it is today?
Today.
So again, I would have a hard time saying no to multifamily when it's zoned R3 today and could be turned into apartments right now. And it would be very difficult to justify taking away that right now.
Would that be an issue?
It's not illegal, but I think we notify them now. I'm not sure that's a group that would necessarily show it.
I would agree.
Yeah.
I would agree. I don't believe in mail.
But again, they do have certain development rights today. You are taking away from them because it is zoned R3.
So the restrictions that were put in place, that will...
So we are moving it from R3 into the Central Business District because of its relation to...
Have we been making restrictions, what? A lot of these places are already going down from 180, 150, 125.
All of this.
Yes, yes, so we've been restricting everybody already. Why now, I'm not saying no to this one.
So we're talking, there's something different about use as opposed to development standards. Today, they could put multifamily on that lot. And now for you to say you cannot do it is inherently a problem. Now, I think Tim's correct, they probably don't care. But you are taking away development rights from them.
Oh, let's see if they care. Can you zone it up only to be a part of it now? Let's see if they care.
But what restrictions are on it? If it was, they could do... Longly pending now.
Correct.
What restrictions are on it now?
So they could have... Are you gonna need to do math?
If that's, if that's 8,000?
Yes.
8,000.
It is 8,000 for the first four dwelling units and 4,000 square feet of land for every dwelling you go out.
It's 126,000 sort of.
The other thing you guys might want to keep in mind too is that like the VA, when that goes away, that's hard one to see. So that could all be developed as residential today. Across the street. Including the birthday.
So again, you have about 34 dwelling units on it today, as it's currently zoned.
So I'm saying, if it's, if it's an issue to take away, multifamily, and we don't want to do that, or can we put other restrictions on it to... I'm not saying we want to, I'm just asking a question.
What other types of restrictions and, or what?
Fill up with that.
So we could say, for example, in the Core 3, the same density standards that are currently on the site, such that it becomes a wash. They can do, after zoning, which is what they can do today.
Eric, were you asking that or were you asking if we leave it, what is it, R13?
It's R3 here.
R3, if we leave it R3, is that what you were asking? If we leave it R3 so as to not take away the right to have multifamily?
Right.
Could we have any restrictions? I think that's what you're asking.
Right.
Not if we change the zone.
Okay, so if we leave it R3, they're going to have the R3 standards that are currently in U D O, which is what they have today. If we move it into the Central Business District, it would probably behoove us to give them the same development rights as they have today. But you don't necessarily have to. Am I misunderstanding the question?
No, I think that, I'm just trying to understand that we don't want to, if we don't want to limit multifamily completely there, which was the conversation we're having, then can we somehow control what we have in other places? What, if that happens, what actually gets built? So that we can limit density. Seems like there was some concern that that's a large site and something bigger could go up than what we've been talking about in other places.
So then what I would say is, again, you have a design review board, and we could, as opposed to all of the other things that we have talked about here, the simplest solution would be to just impose the density requirements that are currently in R3 on the Core 3. That way, they don't lose anything and you are not gaining anything. You are not getting anything more than what you currently get today if we impose the same density standards that currently exist in R3 in the Core 3.
So is that what that also includes? The single-family duplexes, those are all around R3?
They are, but, you know, what we're talking about here is just saying multifamily and putting a density control on them.
And not allowing, to just take away the rights to the single-family or duplexes?
Yes, well, yes, and we would be taking those rights away. And we would be adding non-residential lights, right? So by putting it into the Central Business District, they now can then have non-residential uses there, which they can't currently have today. So we are, while they are losing those single-family duplex options, they are gaining non-residential options by bringing it into Central Business District.
Which limits density.
It doesn't, it doesn't limit density right now, as U D O is currently drafted. But we could, I'm...
It's like a mixed-use requirement.
It would be a mixed-use with a density requirement. That is exactly the same as the R3 requirement today, would be one. Does that make sense?
It does. I don't see how you, I mean, I know that they probably wouldn't answer the letter, but I would... Take their right for it.
Right, exactly.
I'm straightening all the borders off of Thomas, because, you know, screen, of course, and, you know, saving the vessel. We are doing this a lot across the board over everything, you know? This might be the largest change, but we are restricting a lot of things.
But we are not changing how they use their property. Don't, don't conflate development standards and use.
Yeah, I don't want to restrict it so much that they can't use it for the standard, or give it on the same thing.
Not really.
Well, if we've done that, we probably shouldn't. I mean, if it changes that dramatic, then you probably shouldn't.
Alright, so the Core 3, we're gonna impose the R3 density standards. Alright. Anything else on Midway? Okay. As we discussed in June, the professional office district has been restored as a draft revised district was sent to you early this week. It will be used for six hundred and south Port Thomas Avenue. It will be used for 600 South Thomas Avenue, which is shown on the screen. The new district revised professional office district will be utilized at 1960 Memorial Parkway, which is going to be available since today. It will be used at 2000 Memorial Parkway, which is where the vet.
This is anyone you sent us back?
Correct. Yes. The intent of this revised professional office district is to provide locations predominantly office uses, including incidental support services and retail services. Uses permitted by rights include banks, financial institutions, co-work spaces, professional offices, and medical and dental offices. Mental and dental clinics and object care facilities will be restricted uses with limitation being they have no more than 4,000 square feet in size. The retail establishment, personal service establishments, which are things like barber shops and restaurants, will be restricted uses. It would only be permitted when associated with use permitted by rights and occupy 20% of or less of gross floor area of the building.
For the retails, was it restricted? What can't be there in retail?
No, the only thing we're restricting there is that it has to be associated with a use permitted by rights and can't take up no more than 20% of the floor area of the building. In terms of the type of retail, I think that's the restriction.
What's the difference about that one previously?
Basically, it's the same, the only difference being that the retail, the personal service establishments can only take up 10% of the gross floor area of the building. So slightly more in this district.
So slightly more.
Let me take a step back here. The uses are essentially the same, it's what is currently in the professional office district. The only change is that today, retail establishments, restaurants, and personal service establishments can take up no more than 10% of the gross floor area of the building that they're in. I was suggesting that it range to 20%.
So we are separating these from what was down in Wilder, right? Down to the whole.
We're pulling these out of the neighborhood commission?
They are being pulled out of the neighborhood commercial district. And this district will only be used in those locations that I just showed you on the screen. So, South Port Thomas, 600 South Port Thomas Avenue, in the two places on Memorial Parkway.
What is the, is that where?
Where?
The height setback.
Okay. The development standards includes a minimal lot area of 10,000 square feet, a minimum front setback of 20 feet, and a minimum setback of letting non-residential districts is zero. For the minimum setback of letting R1 districts is 25 feet. Parking would have to be located to the rear or side of the principal building, and a maximum height of 40 feet. There are minimum of required design standards in the professional office district. Basically, buildings have to front the street, have to show an edge to the street, have to have a functional entrance, have to have transparent areas, at least 50% of the front facade, blank walls, or, 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 excuse me, private rights away. It has to be a combination of materials and textures to create visual interest. And the facades they have on is, as long as they are straight shaped, but not curved or chewed. And rooftop equipment has to be concealed in building materials to match structure or paint to match structure. Any questions about the new professional office district?
No.
There's no story limitation on it currently as it's drafted, it's just 40 feet. Do you want to size these stories?
I think we should.
Okay. Do you want to allow a half-story or no?
You're calling for a half, or a current, those areas, I think you're talking.
I mean, the house right next to 600 South Port Thomas is.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so.
Right. Built it into the neighborhood of the existing structures.
Alright, two stories for flat, two and a half for flat. But as Ben just said, the house sits right across from 600 South Port Thomas. It's basically three stories.
You're talking about that one. On the corner.
Yeah, on the corner.
I was talking about the one right next door.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. No, you're right though, yeah.
I thought two and a half was fine.
Okay.
Lisa, didn't you say that it had a front on the street?
Yes.
So like the, the one down there on Memorial Parkway, the, the Dax Studio, that's the front of the street?
Yes, but in that particular case, they could easily get a way from the designer.
And that clinic down there doesn't front the street?
It does provide a street edge.
It does provide a street edge, but it's front of the street.
The front door front of the street.
The front door to the park.
That front door does face the reservoir.
I thought it faced the park.
Ground under works there.
I took a window there, a lot of them.
So the only thing that has been present and concerns about this.
And then the one on Big Black doesn't face the side street, it doesn't fade.
No, it faces.
Very important.
Because the door on Bank, St. Thomas Avenue. Alright, any other questions about the professional office district? Alright, this is the last item to discuss. There was quite a bit of discussion about rules in phases two and three. In the Bay Street draft, the planning permission of competitive rules, and that's what is reflected in the Bay Street draft in UDO. At the retreat, the council asked that I bring back standards, potential standards for rules, and those are listed on the following slides. So as those standards are, it would be permitted as the Central Business District only, as a conditional use, after approval by the designer review board and the board of adjustments. The design, construction, and installation, repair, and maintenance must not get in the way of the traffic or pedestrian safety. No part of the rules should exceed the height or width of the building. Can't exceed more than six inches from the plan of the wall. Can't project over the roof line unless the designer review board says it can. And it shall not be installed on any, on any original facade of a building listed on the National Mission Historic Act list, unless it can be.
What did you dig out about this? Is it harder to restrict what they can't do?
It's, it's easier than I was, my initial was no. Once I've done research on it, that was one of the local muralists, and talked to Cody Tenon, those, you know, with it being a conditional, right there, it's got two approvals on it. So, I, I mean, I think it's a good, I think it's a good add for CBD area. And we already have one, two in town, or two. Well, yeah.
We go along the same, you know, I do.
Right. But no, I, I think it's, I think it adds more than enough.
Not a lot of case law on it, because bottom line, people normally do something where they create some reasonable restrictions and, you know, because it's difficult to ban or, but, you know.
You don't think there's any real possibility that somebody wants to do something, we, you know, with some sort of content we don't like, and we say no, and there's some sort of.
That's really quite a planning permission.
We haven't recommended it.
Yeah. Not to have that.
So we're, we're not allowed to regulate content.
That's exactly.
However.
We don't get.
We have a deer, I put it back.
It supports it.
I put it back in here.
We, we.
We stand on that.
We didn't realize, we didn't realize restrictions, we wanted to take further into it. So.
We didn't like it.
I know, I completely understand what your goal is, I think you want to do cause an argument or signal over, I mean, it's not.
So yet, we can't regulate content, but we've got two boards that will be approved.
But they can't deny it based on the content.
Correct.
Not on the content.
What's your rule?
So. I'm gonna lay all that pieces.
Would anybody can paint anything on any building they want, it's only under the designer review board, anything?
I have a friend that works for Artsway, they do the big murals all over the place. Someone donated a ton of money to, to paint a mural about Jerry Springer, commemorating his life and his work. Nobody wants it on their building, but, I mean, he did donate a lot of money to some school or something around here, and we'll probably have a Jerry Springer mural someplace in Cincinnati. I mean, that's, that's not as offensive as other things could be. But that's just, that's just what, how about some of that?
I think, I just heard from everybody here, we agree with Elon taking it out.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, Lisa, because I don't remember the nature of the conversation about this, but you did some homework, and these are all really good safeguards, but I think just because of the, there's a huge unknown there, and it's a headache, so, I shouldn't even use that term, but it is, it could be a potential headache, let's just, let's just save ourselves of it, and not, not.
I agree with you, but you can see that, because I like him, but that's.
But Neil, what's your point?
But the flip side is, if you don't regulate it at all, who to say that you can go out and regulate anything that somebody paints on the side of the building?
So what do you suggest then?
I think it's fine, personally. I mean, we're not advocating for anybody to do a mural, but if you want to put something up that can be considered a mural, at least you have some safeguards to say it can't be painted on the building. You're controlling the visual appearance, even if you can't control the message.
Can we specifically restrict murals on those?
Yeah, I mean, anybody can paint your building whatever they want, basically, as long as it's under their designer review board.
Yeah, but if, if somebody paints an image, wouldn't that be considered a sign?
No, an image is not a sign.
I'm sure a lawyer could.
Like Tim said.
You end up in a fight at some point.
Right.
I don't think you want a bunch of male palace signs on buildings, period.
No, but.
I don't like being said, if you just, no. It's like a jump jar.
I mean, it's basically.
You don't have a contest, like you just throw certain things in the city.
If it's advertising a product or a service, then it's a sign, but if it's not really doing that. It's just too fine.
Then would you rather have some safeguards or just say no?
Like what would help you negate the.
That's a great question.
What?
Do you think it would be better to have some safeguards legally? Or would you just rather say no, and, like, what would help you think?
I, I think I've got a better chance, if we've got a fight with something off, I think we've got a better chance if it's in there and it's got some regulations to it. I don't think you're advocating for it, I don't think you're pushing for it. I totally respect what everybody's saying about, hey, just say no. At some point, we may then end up in a fight over whether or not, you know, if somebody says, I want a mural.
But does he have some legal ground to try to?
Get something, at least, and keep it into it.
Well, I'm like, there's five stories here.
I'm standing there, like we're saying no, he can't do it.
But you're running the First Amendment issues. If you want to paint a flower on the side of your building, because you said you can't do that.
We are.
We can't say that, that's kind of violating your Second Amendment.
I didn't say that. The house, the seller up there, a bunch of people were yelling.
I live on Tim's, and I'm happy with his research.
People like this.
We're the Blaine Towns.
Just don't call my name.
They're all going to be fined if something.
Yeah. Artists. I'll be like Banksy.
Alright, so what are we saying now?
If anyone needs him on this, and if we get the resources.
We've talked about even in, like in Cincinnati, they paint stuff on the streets. Is that a mural?
But they don't have designer review boards, they don't.
They don't have the street, that's, it's not their property.
So I was thinking more, but we couldn't have them, and now we would be allowing it with restrictions.
The court are really prohibited, is what I'm.
We're not promoting it, we're just putting some restrictions.
I can't be defined, it's just being out of law.
They are, they are. Define what it is. I mean, I like them, I just would hate to see, I like you, I would hate to see it used for something that would cause controversy.
I'm with you on that, or a grandpa.
You?
Yeah.
The ones that are, are grandpa. You know, have it.
Yeah. Another one.
We have one.
The one on the side of the 11th South.
Oh, yeah.
That was good.
Alright, so, are we, it's the point of we're leaving them in with these restrictions?
Well, it's something we can, you can do it now. But you.
You're not allowed to do it now.
You're not allowed to do it now. But as.
Done.
Yeah. It's, it's, you know.
So a question for you guys, is are you concerned that somebody will try to do it and have the hoods want to go ahead and sue up? And does that concern?
It will sue.
I'd rather make them do that than that. Just kick them.
But you're saying that we have a better chance of fighting if we have restrictions on her?
I, I think there are First Amendment issues with trying to ban them, and having some control over it makes me more comfortable.
What control do we have? I mean, we have no control over content.
No, and you're right, so. Nothing we can do about that.
What about instead of it being part of the zoning regulation, what if it's just a?
Ordinance.
An ordinance, or even less than that, a city policy? A written policy that doesn't come up until, unless somebody wants to do something. Does that cover us as well?
I, I, well, let me ask you, what are you, what are you trying to do with it? Are you trying to keep it from happening? If we're trying to keep it from happening, I think a policy decision or resolution is even less, has less to do. I, I think it's even more difficult to fight it off. If you really hate it and you don't want it, then I think you stick with your, your situation of, no, we don't want them, then I'll just have to fight the fight when it comes.
Do we put it here, though, or do we put it up?
Change.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, I agree. I think if you're going to ban, you do it here.
Let me ask a question. I mean, I wrestle with it. I think we all agree that. In your backyard, you have better, opportunity to fight with the. We did have a region back.
We don't want. If we have these restrictions.
Thank you. Boarding, can we do it there?
You're talking. Yes. I'm sorry, you have the, you have the space on. We have a better chance of fighting if we have some restrictions on it, we do it if we don't, is what it is.
I mean, you've got, yes, you've got some ability to try to control the narrative a little bit, but if you'd rather just fight the fight.
Let me ask a quick question though. So if somebody theoretically creates a message that is controversial, which could happen, it's going to hit the face by somebody who disagrees. So when that happens, then what, you know, what's the involvement? You know, because the defaced mural looks a hell of a lot worse than no mural.
That's, the, the rules say that.
Re-removal, see the vandalizer, we don't, including the, the property owner or owner says again. Okay, so, so, I mean, okay. I'm just, I'm just thinking worst-case scenario.
Enough. You know, forget it, they know.
So you know, worst-case scenario.
Well, yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking if somebody had a really insensitive messenger, or controversial message that they wanted to post, and it was defaced, and then sure, the owner's got to restore it to its original condition, well, it's going to hit the face again.
Yeah, the way it was.
Can you define a mural? What's a canvas that you can have, that you can take down? Is your, is painted construction?
That'd be a sign.
That, any one of the signs, I would think.
You know, a mural can be, you know, on, something attached, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be painted.
Banned or. Some people put banned.
It can be canvas, it can be tile, it can be any number of things, it can be a mural. Doesn't necessarily have to be painted. So what's currently.
Should we make sure we make it have to be painted versus tiles?
Three, you don't want three days later.
Well, I'm just saying that it's a lot harder to put something, you know, I mean, that's a lot more effort to get something, trying something hanging. We'd have a lot of cost. Do we have a definition for mural?
We do.
God bless.
We have a draft definition.
Well, yeah, you have restrictions on classes and all that, so.
Actually, I have a different, um, so what we have in terms of, you can't go beyond the building. You can't go up the roof, you can't go the height, you can't go the width. But in terms of the size of it, no, there's no restrictions, it's currently drafted.
So Tim, it sounds like, to you, from a legal standpoint, it's six on one hand, half dozen on the other. We, we say no, somebody comes to something, you gotta fight them in court, or we have this, and they do something we don't want, we really can't stop it necessarily. I mean, are you leaning one way or the other in terms of protecting the city? Is this a lot?
I mean, just from the standpoint of trying to defend, you're always better off starting from the position of, hey, we didn't ban it, and we tried to regulate it, our regulations are reasonable, normal, appropriate. If, if it concerns the, the language, then there's really only one way to deal with that, and that's to say, no murals, and then when they come sue us, we go fight.
And they started to introduce several processes, a process to get the mural through, so.
Correct.
Can you use the same, like signs, we can be of size. We say no part of the mural, so it's either height and width of the stuff. Can we, instead of that, can we put in there and kind of tie it to the signs where it's sizes?
Fifty percent.
Signs that can't be bigger than this?
I mean, you could.
That would knock out some of it, because it wouldn't want to hang on the side of the big building though.
The way you'd make it out of circle.
Well, okay.
That doesn't say anything, it's not a sign. It's not a sign, it's.
But it'd be the same thing, we'd fight the same battle, we'd have a size that's in there, maybe.
Yeah, they got the two people separated.
So, you have lots of different building sizes in town, right? And so, for example, if you said 50% of the building on Port Thomas School building, it's going to be tiny. As opposed to 50% of the building on the back of 18 North, it's going to be huge. So, I don't know what size. I don't know what the appropriate size would be, given the diversity of buildings that you have.
I could see a positive with this. I could see the Art Center, the Women's Club, the Philip Flair's building. They're going to add an addition on the back, put in elevators and all sorts of stuff. And maybe instead of brick, they do a big mural on the back of the building, so when people come and park in the, parking lot there, they see some big theatrical.
So, here's an idea.
That might be a positive use of.
Here's an idea. We have made an incredible amount of headbutt this evening. But this issue is stopping us.
I think we all agree, most of us at least.
I mean, I just wanted to say, this could be something that is handled after we work this initiative, as opposed to trying to shoot one in right now. But I'm willing to do whatever y'all want.
And I'm happy to put something in writing, kind of outlining my thoughts on, send it to everybody, let everybody think about it a little bit. That one would be grabs.
Alright, good, don't get now.
One way or the other. Unless there's, unless there's big.
No, I don't have strong enough feelings.
I mean, if everybody has strong feelings, then that's fine, I don't, but I'd rather pick a side at this point if I can.
I don't have strong feelings, I'm one way or the other. I'm going to have to stick on this.
I mean, do we have anything here, was there another page?
The other cell.
I mean, should say something about offensive language, or?
You can't control language.
Can't say anything like that to?
It's case law on it, and, you know. I think it's crazy, but.
It is, right?
I'm going to be the first guy hated when it says have the police or something, you know. But, it, it's crazy, but.
That's where we're at. Again, I do think our town's different, I don't think we're going to have the business centers allowing anything other than what we have. I think it would all be tasteful, and you still have to do levels of review, even if it's not.
I mean, if you put something super offensive, you're going to agree you're unproperty.
Absolutely.
Right.
We have enough good Samaritans to all ban together and buy their property. Well, Ben's going to go deface it enough times.
I heard the same thing.
Alright.
Do we want to, no, yes?
That's what we want to do, it's just.
Married citizens like here.
I'm kind of leaning toward this, if I'm understanding correctly, because then we have filters, we can have some discussion with the person and try to have some influence over what goes up, versus we're just in court, fighting. Not promoting it.
Absolutely.
We all okay with that?
Good.
Can we have a bullet that says basically at the beginning that? Murals are frowned on, or they're discouraged, or something, like bullet number one.
If you understand, I think it also has some control.
I think if we have some control, it's better.
Somebody can do this without even asking.
If we put this in, they can't.
But you still do it.
Yeah, yes.
Alright, so, based on tonight's discussions, what are our next steps? So, we can, obviously, I will take all the input that we have discussed during the base board retreats and everything over our last two meetings. We will create another edition of this, or take this about a month or so to do. Do you want to have another meeting where you all come back together, or we go through it all again? Or are you ready to start moving through the, the adoption process without?
I think, I think we did this last time with like council meeting, I'm looking at this year, council meeting, I want a secondary review of this, or an attorney.
We, we can do an attorney review, that's fine. I don't see anything wrong there.
I just thought in the future, I know we discussed it like council, and then after when it's all said and done, then we have it reviewed for language, and see if we're going to take it any farther, have an outside perspective on this at this point.
I mean, just for a legal review, I don't have, I don't have any issue with that. But, but still, where are, are you good with? Move forward the process, where, where, how do you want the process to move?
I think, I wouldn't mind having one more meeting.
Yeah, I think, like, I know it's all related to an update here, but having a separate document that shows all of the changes that were made throughout our last, what, three discussions?
I think we could just do a council, too, I mean, do we need to include them on the last meeting?
I guess I should, a couple things, so, what is the, what is the, I'm trying to remember, is it 60 days?
30 day notice.
Oh, I know that, I'm talking about, I'm talking about when, when it comes to council, do they have a, do they have a timeline on legislative adoption?
No, I mean, it's generally done when you do it next day, you do it.
I understand minimum, I'm talking about maximum. Because all I guess I'm saying is, you mail out all these notices to all these people that are being affected by this, you're going to get a lot more public attention.
You're going to have a public hearing.
So, you're going to get completely different, not completely different, but you're going to get a much more diverse amount of input from the public than you have to date. So, I, what I'm, what I guess what I'm saying is, and I, I think it is a good idea to have a joint meeting, I just think it would be beneficial to do it after you've gotten that input.
Yeah.
I didn't even say that on the review, it's just to, to put this out, have a public meeting on this, wait for that reaction.
That's what I'm saying.
Have a meeting about it, and then look to say, we need to review a bunch of stuff because of all the feedback, or, or not.
Yeah, right, because we've made a lot of decisions or assumptions that we think we know what the property owners want, but we really don't know that.
So, are we good with, once she creates it, send it out, and then we'll start the public hearing portion, to, we're ready to notify the building, or the property owners, we'll have the public hearing, and during that process, I'm also going to send it for legal review, because even, even after we change stuff, what that'll do is, I'll send it to a review that second time, if there are any major changes, and it'll be much shorter.
Do you think we should do, do you separate a public hearings, one with businesses, or someone with residential? Does it not seem like?
Hey, Matt, question, should the council meeting and the public hearing do with us?
It'll be.
It's our meeting.
It's our meeting, but can they be there somehow?
Oh, anybody could attend.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, anybody could purchase.
But it'll be a mess all right?
Before the public, just group right here, it's a working group. Are we all happy with what we did 100% or do we come back for an hour and say, okay, this is what's?
I don't think we're, I don't think we're going to be 100%. I don't. My personal opinion is, they go back and they redo this, and they send it out to us and give us a week.
I mean, you ready to do that, or you want to come here?
No, I think we just read through it and go, and then go for the public hearing, because I think you're right. Especially, to me, the thing that's going to hit is the DRB having influence on everybody on the avenue. That's in there, right?
Well, if they do not have review, otherwise they can't meet the standards on the, on the avenue. Otherwise, if they need to, if the property owners on the avenue can meet the existing standards that are in zoning ordinance, then it's just reviewed by law. If they can't, then they go to the DRB.
But it's different, they don't have to do anything right now.
Right, they do not have any standards that they have to meet other than setbacks.
So, now you're going to have, everybody that lives on the avenue from one end to the other, finding out for the first time that they have to come and do something different.
They have digital standards.
Yes, we'll make a lot of feedback, so I think we do that first, I think that's a great idea. And then we might have to meet again and readjust stuff if we, if we feel necessary, and then do the review, after we make some changes. So, we get it, we have a public hearing, we send out the notices, schedule a public hearing, and then pray that everything goes okay.
So, I still think it's good just for timelines to get the legal review in right away, because they'll, they'll just repeat the change, the small changes. Because it's going to take them a few, you know, a few weeks, three, four weeks to do a legal review on it. So, if I start that now, then if we make even 18 changes, that, those will be just real quick legal reviews. So, that'll, that'll install everybody out. My recommendation should be.
What's the right timeline, you said it, right? Is that what you were saying?
It'll take us a month, best case, to make all of the changes.
You know, we can get the condensed version.
Yeah, give me a lot of notice.
So, what is a public hearing in Northland?
Everything goes according to plan, then it will be like October 1st. Something like that.
And then the city needs time to send out the notices about a public hearing.
So, that has to be done thirty days ahead of time, that will go out like August 4th.
Okay.
Yep.
So, we have a bigger date for the meeting. Alright. Actually, it's one of their meetings, right? So, is it just a meeting?
It, it would be, and we can make it a special one, okay? I don't think it would be a standard, because it's a public hearing, so it wouldn't be their standard. And you could do it on the same time, I guess.
It would, it's, I think by a care, I think that's a planning commission public hearing.
It has to be.
No, I don't think I see a meeting date, it's like you ever had.
So, we've got a, we've got a draft timeline that we'll put out, but let's get through that first draft first, and then we'll get that, because it may take a little longer or something. We'll, we'll communicate the, the timeline once we get the, the next draft back.
Alright, good night, y'all, thank you.